YouTube test, test one, two.
If you look at the components of the tax bill, and this is from all taxing districts, you will see the top two are the operating and the debt service for the city of Pembroke Pines, and the change is a negative 5.9 percent. Our, this tax bill, only 31 percent of it relates to the city. The other 69 percent relates to all other taxing districts in Broward County. We have 56,000 residential properties, 40,640 or 70, roughly 72 percent have homestead exemptions, and we have 2,564 single-family properties that have a zero taxable value. And you look at the taxable value range from zero up to 1.7 million dollars. That's the highest rate, and there's one residential unit in the city at that rate. The millage rate history for the last 10 years, if you look at the aggregate millage rate, you will see every year in the past 10 years, it has decreased. And this is the lowest, and it's been the first time in 10 years that it's less than six mills. So the aggregate amount is 5.9898. If you look at the general fund increase, it's 19 million is mainly driven by 10 million in personnel increases and 8.6 million in operating increases for the proposed budget for the next fiscal year. In the personnel budget, it includes five additional city positions for the police department, two forensic examiner one positions, one economic crimes investigator, and two police service aides for code compliance. The operating budget increase of 8.6 million primarily includes 2.7 million for repair and maintenance, 1.7 million for operating supplies, these are non-capital items, 1.1 million for contractual services, which includes three additional positions of, one in the police department as a payables procurement specialist, one in recreation, which is a recreation specialist, and a clerical specialist for planning and economic development. The general fund capital budget increased by 148,900 dollars, and the major capital items include within the police department 2.6 million for police vehicles and related equipment for the 18 mark vehicles, 351,000 for vanguard ballistic shields and in fire rescue, 1.9 million for a new fire truck as an aerial platform, and 435,000 for an ambulance rescue. In technology services, it's 490,000 for the replacement of our Cisco switches. In public services, it's 1.1 million for generators and many split HVAC units for our IT rooms, 400,000 for the Polk building remodel for secondary EOs. The proposed millage rate, as we suggested and it's advertised in the trim notice, is five point six six nine zero. It generates approximately a hundred and one point seven million. And that represents only a ninety-five percent collection rate. And it means about seven point six million year-over-year increase in the proposed tax budget. The proposed debt service rate decreased by point zero two zero two, from point three four one zero to point three two oh eight. The associated five point eight million revenue is budgeted in the debt service fund. The aggregate proposed millage is now five point nine eight nine eight, which is approximately three tenths percent lower than the current rate. This rate requires four affirmative votes of the city commission in order to be adopted. And the total value as of seven one twenty-four, our property value has increased by eight point three nine percent. And the value for each mill is seventeen point nine million dollars. If you look at the components of the tax bill, and this is from all taxing districts, you will see the top two are the operating and the debt service for the city of Pembroke Pines. And the change is a negative five point nine percent. Our, this tax bill, only thirty-one percent of it relates to the city. The other sixty-nine percent relates to all other taxing districts in Broward County. We have fifty-six thousand residential properties, forty thousand, six hundred and forty, or seventy, roughly seventy-two percent have homestead exemptions. And we have two thousand, five hundred and sixty-four single-family properties that have a zero taxable value. And you look at the taxable value range from zero up to one point seven million dollars. That's the highest rate, and there's one residential unit in the city at that rate. The millage rate history for the last ten years, if you look at the aggregate millage rate, you will see every year in the past ten years, it has decreased. And this is the lowest, and it's been the first time in ten years that it's less than six mills. So the aggregate amount is five point nine eight nine eight. If you look at the general fund increase, it's nineteen million is mainly driven by ten million in personnel increases and eight point six million in operating increases for the proposed budget for the next fiscal year. In the personnel budget, it includes five additional city positions for the police department, two forensic examiner one positions, one economic crimes investigator, and two police service aides for code compliance. The operating budget increase of eight point six million primarily includes two point seven million for repair and maintenance, one point seven million for operating supplies. These are non-capital items, one point one million for contractual services, which includes three additional positions of one in the police department as a payables procurement specialist, one in recreation, which is a recreation specialist, and a clerical specialist for planning and economic development. The general fund capital budget increased by a hundred and forty-eight thousand, nine hundred dollars. And the major capital items include within the police department, two point six million for police vehicles and related equipment for the eighteen mark vehicles, three hundred and fifty-one thousand for Vanguard ballistic shields and in fire rescue, one point nine million for a new fire truck as an aerial platform, and four hundred and thirty-five thousand for an ambulance rescue. In technology services, it's four hundred and ninety thousand for the replacement of our Cisco switches. In public services, it's one point one million for generators and many split HVAC units for our IT rooms, four hundred thousand for the Polk building remodel for secondary E O C. And the recreation and cultural arts, two hundred and fifty thousand for prefab bathrooms at the Craig Rupp Dog Park, and a hundred and seventy-five thousand for Silver Lakes North renovate soccer fields. That concludes the general fund. Under the road and bridge fund, revenue by category is balanced, however, it's with a one point four million transfer from the general fund in order to balance road and bridge and utilizing one point five million of fund balance. The intragovernmental revenue is half a million dollars, and it's driven by funding for Mobility Hub. The fuel taxes increased, these are all projected by the state of Florida franchise fees, intergovernmental revenue that I just mentioned, and the transfer from the general fund, and also utilizing some beginning surplus dollars. The expense category personnel remain constant. The operating budget went up one point five million. The capital budget is for a wall, and that's budgeted four hundred and fifty thousand in transfers in and out from the general fund. The road resurfacing projects for twenty-four, twenty-five include six hundred and thirty-five thousand for Pembroke Lake Section Three at Northwest one hundred and eighteenth Avenue, six hundred and twenty thousand for Johnson Street from Palm Avenue to hiatus Road, five hundred and thirty thousand in the trails and Southwest one ninety-ninth Avenue and Southwest Fifty-Fourth Place North, two hundred and seventy thousand for Northwest one hundred and seventy-second Avenue from Pines Boulevard to Northwest Ninth Street, and a hundred and eighty-five thousand Northwest one hundred and twenty-fifth Avenue from Taft Street to Sheridan Street. Other road projects included in next year's proposed budget include four hundred and thirty-two thousand for Pembroke Lake Section One, swale and regrading and drainage. The utility fund revenue by category, you have water and sewer charges, debt services, and I'll go through each one of these for you. The water and sewer charges represents three point three million increase, and it's related to the CPI based upon October one, twenty twenty-four. It represents a five point three two percent interest. The twenty-four, twenty-five water rate will be twenty-one dollars and nineteen cents for three thousand gallons, and sewer represents twenty-seven dollars and eleven cents. This is an increase of two dollars and forty-four cents per month. We also are doing debt proceeds of twenty million to fund our capital budget in order to balance it. This is debt service over thirty years. It assumes a four point five percent rate increase, a four point five percent interest rate. And it will cost us, and it's an expenditure, about one point two million a year. We also had an increase in revenue of one point six million associated with our favorable interest rates. If you look at utility, water and sewer rates in comparison by other cities, based on three thousand gallons per month, Pembroke Pines is second from the lowest based on three thousand gallons. If you look at an average of five thousand gallons per month, we're in about the lower one-third as far as water and sewer rates. Our expenditures for personnel is up slightly, less than one percent. Operating is an increase of about eight point three percent. And our capital represents about a sixty percent increase, however, that is funded through debt service. The capital budget of twenty-one point seven million consists of eight point six million for water distribution system replacement for Sun Swept and Holly Lake, five million for our water plants, electrical distribution system replacement, polymer room rehab, widening and deepening existing well, five million for sewer treatment, which is wastewater treatment, electrical equipment and replacement, two point three million for sewer collection. Excuse me, let me shut this off. Sewer collection system rehab, lining and force mains, and eight hundred and fifteen thousand for the Polk building remodel and spring, fire sprinkler system. The first public hearing on the budget is Wednesday, September fourth at six P M. The fire protection assessment hearing is September twelfth at five fifteen P M. And the final hearing on the budget is Wednesday, September eighteenth at six P M. One thing I didn't mention when we talked about the fire assessment fee, on this evening's agenda, you have an ordinance establishing competitive rates with other communities regarding inspection fees for businesses. If in fact that ordinance is adopted on second and final reading, the first September, meeting of September, then the fire assessment rate would probably go down a little over six dollars a month. That is the presentation. It's really here for any questions from the commission. As I've said, we provided you with the budget on August first. Is, if there's any clarification that you want, I'll be happy to provide it. Also, there's any memos that you'd want to send and ask for clarification prior to the first reading on the budget, which is September fourth, we will provide those responses to you. At this point, we have only received thick calls from the public regarding the trim notice. Three of them were basically asking for clarification of what it meant. But there really weren't any question regarding our rate because our rate was less. However, assessments may have gone up for some, especially homesteaded people. I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Dodge. Very, very comprehensive presentation. I wanted to ask you, at divisioning, the commission talked about the road and bridge fund. And we talked about how maybe we could stretch those dollars by bonding some of the projects and get to more of the resurfacing faster. Did your team take a look at it? And what, what, what were your thoughts on that suggestion?
We, we did look at it. The road and bridge fund is pretty limited. It's not like the utility fund. And the amount of money that we receive from the state and gas taxes isn't really that sufficient. And we could do some, but it's, it's something we could look at further. But I don't think it's the best approach for us at this time. But if it's something you want to explore further, we can present what those numbers would mean. But once you fund the majority of those dollars you receive from the state and debt service, if there's some other road project or some other special need that you have, that usually falls under the road and bridge, you may not have the revenue to do it.
Okay, questions?
Mr. Schwartz. Okay. Same as I was, thank you and staff for your comprehensive presentation. One of the things I wanted to follow up on is more the, of the fire side of things. So if I can have, through the management, if I can have the fire chiefs come down to ask, I have a few questions to ask. Thank you. I don't expect the fire chiefs to have any answer this evening. The commission requested that the chief bring back his full five-year plan at the first, at the first session. However, I had an opportunity to read the annual report, and there was just some things that came up. And I did speak briefly, I did speak to the chief in advance, so I'm not blindsiding him with the, with the question. Chief, G I S versus CAD. There's a discrepancy with respect to the number of calls in which it's reported. And we base our request for funding, i.e. the fire assessment fee to our residents. Can you explain why there is a, why is there a discrepancy between the CAD and the G I S model?
Marcel Rodriguez, fire chief. So, Commissioner, I believe you're talking about, we're talking about two different things. We have a total incidence and total number of runs.
Correct.
And I wish I knew exactly where you were referring to in the G S G study. But you may be talking about this one section where it captures the number of runs. For instance, it'll be one incident where two units go on this one incident, and it's captured as two runs. So if, if I'm correct in the area that you're referring to, then there will be an increase in that number compared to what we report on our annual report, which is number of incidents.
Right, which would make sense. It would make sense, right? So, chief, we've had a pretty steady personnel level now. You've been the chief now for how many years?
Since, two years, August second.
Exactly. Two years in. Staffing levels have remained relatively flat.
You know, they take their occasional dip, but, but right now, I'm happy to report that we're, we're at par. Every position is filled.
I would, when, when I look at a, when I look at a report following standards, right? What's a normal shift? Like, what can we expect to have on, on a day-to-day basis? How many personnel, generally speaking, do we have?
Optimal staffing is ideally is forty-nine.
Okay.
Per shift.
All right.
Minimal staffing, we can go as low as forty-five per shift.
And when that happens, then overtime is triggered.
Correct.
All right, so colleagues, there's about a two seventy-five to three hundred thousand dollar line item in the budget for overtime for the fire department as compared to the, the police department, which is exponentially more than what the fire department is paying out for various different reasons. So, chief, the, the residents have asked me to ask, do we have the same level of personnel on every truck every day? Or does that move around based upon minimum staffing or normal staffing?
Well, no, it can shift. For example, on our ladder companies, they can be staffed with a captain, a firefighter, and a driver engineer. That's optimal staffing. However, at times, we do go down to a driver engineer and a captain, or even a driver engineer and a paramedic on our ladder trucks.
Is there ever a time that we don't have an officer on a vehicle?
That would be the one instance when we go down far enough in the position of captain, where we would not have a cap on a ladder truck. That would be the single time.
Okay. If you want to mind bring, if you could, over the last, just in your tenure, the last two years, how many time, how many times that has occurred? So we have three sixty-five times two, that's seven hundred and fifty days. If we can, if we can figure out that, because I want to make sure that we're, if we're requesting dollars from the public, I want to make sure that we're paying for the personnel who are supposed to be there.
Right. So I want to also make note, Commissioner, if or when that truck goes on an incident of any significance, there's always additional units responding. So for instance, a structure fire, you could expect to have, you know, up to three fire engines with three officers, a battalion chief, and a lieutenant with that one truck on that day that perhaps it went down to just to without a supervisor. So there's plenty of man-staff on scene to make decisions and manage the operation.
All right, thank you, chief. That's all you got.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, just a couple of quick questions. So just looking at the rents and royalty, we had an increase of the one point one million. What is that relative to, what's the total rent and royalty? What is that percent increase of one point one million?
Six point seven six percent. I can go back to. Go back to that slide, hold on. You look under, it went from fifteen million to sixteen million, eight eighty-nine. So it was an increase of one million, sixty thousand, to eighty, six point seven percent increase.
Okay. And do we know what that is relative to market rates?
Well, the majority of it is in the housing division, which is the, the low-income housing that we have. That was the, the bulk of it as far as market rates. When we have general government buildings and recreation, cultural arts, community services, some of those, there's not a whole lot you can compare to market rates. A lot of the, the rents that we have of cultural arts are far less than what you'd get in the industry, but we're, we're providing these for the community.
Okay. Where, where would I find those? That's listed in the budget, right? Somewhere?
Yes, it's in the backup.
I'll get back later on that. Okay. The other question I just had is, what is the current ad valorem collection rate? Say as of, I don't know.
As of today?
Yeah.
From the financial statement, we normally budget ninety-five percent. Sometimes it can go a little bit higher. It really depends on when property owners pay their taxes. If they pay it, as soon as it's available, we take the worst cases, ninety-five percent. Lisa, do you have the percentage in the?
But you don't have to provide that to me now, I'm just.
We, we can give it to you.
Well, because I'm going to ask that it, it's like for the last three years, just so we can see what the measure is over the last three years, what is that collection rate on ad valorem?
Okay.
Okay. And the new police positions, are they, what bargaining unit are they going to be a participant in?
Well, the police positions right now, I don't believe any of these positions are part of the police bargaining unit. The civilians do not have a bargaining unit at this time.
Okay. All right. Those are my questions, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Manager, do we have, what do we currently have in terms of vacancies in the police department? Is it still roughly twenty-six or of some of the hiring that we said was in the process of happening right now? I know the chief has mentioned some. Would that be factored into the budget?
All those positions are budgeted for. We're assuming they will be filled. That's correct.
I think it was four. Was it?
Oh, no, it's around twenty.
I know there's twenty-six vacancies, but I, what I'm trying to get at, we've budgeted for how many that are coming in?
We've budgeted for them all.
Okay. We haven't filled them. So the question is, how many do we have that we are planning on bringing on? I know that number changes because I know the chief says our standards are higher. Should I call the chief up? Is that easier?
I'm going to call him down so he can tell us how many are going into the academy, but we're still interviewing.
Jose Vargas, police chief. I, I, are you asking if we added positions to the budget?
So, and I'm not being clear, that's my fault, not yours. Okay, so we have twenty-six vacancies. I understand based on what the manager has said, they're all budgeted for. The question I have is, how many of those vacancies do you anticipate filling within this fiscal year? I know that the number varies based on where they are in the application process. If there's something in the background that they discover that makes them unemployable, et cetera, et cetera. Like, where are we in that process?
So we are currently processing, I believe, up to twenty at the time. You never really know, right? Because it, it just depends. Sometimes they, 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 they don't meet the standards. But in, if you're asking me to give you an anticipated over the next year, we're hoping to have, hopefully, a half of those filled, hopefully. But it's, it's, it's a challenge, and we're working hard to get those filled. And we're, we're making a lot of progress on the civilian side.
One other question, what, and this may be in some of the documents I've seen, what are we anticipating in terms of natural attrition, folks that would be retiring from the police department for the fiscal year?
Again, it, it really varies. Sometimes you'll have an officer that just decides. Again, i- i- it really varies. Sometimes you'll have an officer that just decides, I'm done. Um, many are very happy, many sometimes return to us, uh, uh, to, to do other tasks. Um, so for me to give you a projection on that, it, it, it really varies, but, uh, we've had. Um, over the last year, we have maintained a net gain. So we have brought up, brought in more than have separated. Um, and then the gain can, can vary, uh, anywhere from four to up to ten sometimes. It just depends on the time span that you're looking at.
Okay.
But it's always been a gain over the last year.
Which is good news. Okay, no, that's, I, I'm sorry for not being clear, Mr. Manager. I understand what you meant with the twenty-six that they're budgeted. I just wanted clarity because my concern is, we have folks that we're trying to bring in and our standards are higher, but we also have folks that eventually retire, right? Um, and so I, I, I don't want it necessarily to be a wash, uh, i- i- for the next fiscal year. In other words, what I mean by that is. Let's say ten retire, ten come in. That's my concern, that we're basically back where we would be next fiscal year. If we have ten retired, ten come in and everything else stays the same. So that's, that was my concern. I mean, it's not something. It's not, the department doesn't bear fault, it's just natural. I'm just trying to see how quickly we can fill those vacancies and keep them. So we don't come back next year and have so many vacancies.
So one thing I can, I can let you know is we don't have a, uh, a, an issue of keeping our employees. Um, we are just, we've added over the last fiscal years quite a few positions, and so we're still somewhat playing catch up. As many other agencies are, uh, but we're making good leadway on, on getting positions filled.
That's very reassuring. Thank you. That's, that's it for me. I did have a question on fire, but that's not him.
No, it's not.
Um, is, could you? You could always try to answer, but I think the chief may not like that.
Well, we, we do love our fire department.
I can call up the, the chief?
Okay. Good evening again.
I'm gonna ask you about police now.
I'll be able to answer everyone too.
Basically the same questioning. My concern is staffing levels for, for your departments and what we need to do up here as a commission. So where, where are we in terms of vacancies within fire?
Okay, so, um, as far as our firefighters, we're, uh, we just hi- uh, started a group of eight yesterday. So we're fully staffed in that position. We are vacant, uh, we have four lieutenant vacancies current. However, we have a promotional exam scheduled, um, next couple of weeks, a few weeks. That, um, from that promotional exam, we'll be able to fill those four positions. So that's where we're at. Currently, I, um, once we do that, we'll be fully staffed, um, at every position. Um, period. Now, um, back to the question I had earlier. So we usually ratio of four per position. Right, so to adequately staff the each rank. I'll, I'll use the captain position as an example. We have, uh, six engines. Two ladder trucks in service at all times. So that's a total of eight captains that we need to fully staff those trucks. The ratio we use to adequately staff them is four. So four times eight, thirty-two. Currently, we have a, a total of thirty-three, um, eleven per shift, thirty-three captains. Well, I believe, uh, today we're adequately staffed. And one of the reasons why. We at times, um, drop down on our ladders. Um, it's because we're promoting captains as those vacancies come up. We're creating a vacancy in the lieutenant position. So we often ask those captains to step down and operate as a captain, at least during this time, until we can fill that lieutenant position. But again, in the future, once this lieutenant exam is completed, I don't expect to have that issue, and it'll auto correct itself. We expect to have, uh, a officer on every truck moving forward.
Okay.
Thank you, you got it.
Thank you.
I'm done.
Thank you very much. Uh, the way the agenda is printed, um, we can go into the. General meeting immediately. However, we have several presentations that are going to be made. One of them is on the, uh. The overpass projects. There are folks coming to speak to us about the pension item. So one of the things that we could do. I'm thinking is we could go to item twenty-five. After we go through the original stuff and go through every one of the, um. Um, the road projects, except for the ones that we have a speaker for. And that could absorb some time, or we can, um, recess until six thirty. What is your pleasure? Okay, can we do twenty-five? Mister Dodge, you have, uh, staff that can help us through twenty-five. I think Mister Stam was gonna present.
Did he step outside, Mike?
I tell you what, let's.
Here he comes.
Mike, we were gonna do twenty-five, item twenty-five, the, the long sheet. Uh, and get as much of that done as we could. We're not going to do the overpass projects. We're gonna wait for, uh. For the engineers to come for that. But before we start that, I'm gonna have to ask for a roll call. And we'll just start the meeting regularly and we'll go to number twenty-five and then we'll come back. We're gonna jump around a little bit today, folks, so bear with. Roll call, please, for a regular meeting.
Vice Mayor Good.
I am here.
Commissioner Hernandez.
Here.
Commissioner Rodriguez. Here, Commissioner Short. Mayor Castillo.
Here.
City Manager Dodge.
Here.
City Attorney Gore.
Here.
We have Coram.
Thank you very much. Uh, we will have the National Anthem when, uh, the presenters are here. We asked them to be here at six thirty, so. It's gonna be a little bit out of order, but we will capture everything that we have to capture. Uh, we will also go back and do items for press of the public, Commissioner Order Report, all that other, all that other stuff. Let's go to item twenty-five. And this is a discussion and possible action on the twenty twenty-four Pembroke Pines Transportation Project Summary Listing. Mister Stam, you have, uh, you have the podium.
Mayor, it's your request, uh, well, first let me, uh, Mike Stam, Assistant City Manager and Director of Planning and Economic Development. Uh, since the city began our transportation master plan document, we also started maintaining a list of projects. That fall within our boundary. We do our best to try to keep this list up to date. And Mayor, at the June eighteenth meeting, you asked us to bring back a list of the projects that are in some phase. Of development, planning, thoughts, um, within the boundaries. What you have before you is a list of those projects. These projects exist in various MPO plans, the, uh, TIP, which is the Transportation Improvement, uh, Program. Um, some of these projects may be, um, county projects, FDOT projects, et cetera. Out in the, uh, hallway where I was, uh, the MPO folks are here for their presentation also.
Okay.
So realistically, this was just a list for you. As a commission, we also maintain a webpage with this list. Where we often put public notices for, uh, transportation-related meetings. This information is here to answer any questions. I'll do my best. Um, these projects are. All over the place at various scales at various times. Um, as we all know, one of our biggest frustrations is transportation projects. Often take a long time to get put into the queue, um, implementation studies, all those things, they take time. But there's a series of projects here and I'll do my best to answer questions about them, if there are individual questions.
So I brought this, I brought this sheet forward because after, um, after we're done with the budget. And I guess charter review is the next item, Mister City Attorney, I guess that has to be on the next, uh, agenda, because when is the deadline for the charter review?
The deadline for the March twenty twenty-five general municipal election in Broward County would be sometime in December. Qualifying for that for offices is in the first week in January, and from my recollection, talking with the supervisor of elections. Legal counsel just several days ago, uh, the city will have ballot access to choose to have some, making a request for a special election during the general municipal election. Uh, but ordinances need to be delivered by the end of December.
So without objection, if you could bring, if you could bring the charter review items that came from the board next meeting. Uh, Mister Dodge, if you could call a workshop before that meeting to discuss charter review items. And then we'll have the regular meeting on, uh, on charter review at the next meeting. Um, and then after that, we have to get into strategic plan. As you know, the, uh, the, uh, town hall meetings are completed. And, uh, we've got lots and lots of comments from, uh, from residents. And the next, the next challenge after the budget charter review is the strategic plan. An integral part of the strategic plan obviously will be traffic. It's the number one concern in the city. So I wanted to make sure that everyone here had an understanding of what the projects were that were already funded, that were on the table, that were moving forward. So if we could just take a moment to review these, so. The transportation master plan is the engineering report that came out of the last commission, correct?
Correct, the, uh, the commission allocated funds to study transportation-related projects. Um, it summarized a lot of the projects that are on this list and many of this, these projects, you know, were extrapolated from there. There was also some ideas about dealing with, um, transportation-related issues.
Okay.
As you know, that project, uh, received a lot of public input. Um, we utilized YouTube, we lose, utilized online surveys to get feedback from residents. Um, again, on our transportation webpage, there's a link to it inside the agenda item. We've got some information about the transportation master plan and a copy of transportation master plans there also.
So on that item, my understanding is that it totals about two hundred and fifty million dollars if we did everything that was in the plan.
Correct.
Obviously, that's gonna be well beyond our price tag. So for strategic planning purposes, I, my understanding is that you're pairing that down to some sort of. Workable, most utilitarian in terms of reducing or improving traffic, uh, citywide. Is that right?
Well, Ma- Mayor, it's important to recognize that, as I mentioned before, we've got FDOT projects, MPO projects, county projects, and then we have city projects. So there's projects that would not be on their radar.
Right.
Um, you know, we've discussed, uh, for example, widening two hundred and eight. That would be a municipal project, you know? So where that fits in the queue and where we allocate those dollars is one of those things that's itemized inside there. Whereas separately, the, um, I know Vice Mayor Good's very familiar with the, uh, University to Douglas widening project. That's been FDOT-driven project. So those aren't our direct funds, but obviously city support and city progress through that project is important. So I think the transportation master plan identified who the lead agency was on a lot of these projects. And, you know, what may have to come out on the city's end compared to what's coming out from other agencies.
Okay, good. Uh, so, so, so that's the first item. And the second one is the school mitigation plan. What's that?
So this led to the transportation master plan. Um, you know, we evaluated the biggest issue, uh. Especially in Western Pembroke Pines. As you all know, west of a hundred and seventy-eight, we have about twelve thousand students at our schools. Uh, many of those students do not come from our zip codes. They come from outside our zip codes. Which led to the idea to go for a transportation master plan to look at alternatives for transportation. Um, it was our initial study, um, slightly reactive during COVID. Obviously. Most parents did not want to put their kids on school buses during COVID time. Um, which led to major traffic increases at all of our schools. Um, but it led to the transportation plan. As you go through each of these projects, the number three project, for example, that's here, City Center Mobility Hub, that's actually on tonight's agenda. Um, that's a project here at City Center for mobility, bus improvements, um, multi-use path. Um. Bike pad improvements inside city center here, new bus shelters out on Pines Boulevard. So, you know, these projects are all in various stages. Uh, we've already started implementing item number four. Item number five, the commission's already approved, the Flamingo Greenway, we've got the preliminary plans. Uh, they should be building that very soon. I know I've presented that to Century Village and to the residents many times. Um. Traffic signal for, for seventh. I know that's Vice Mayor's, uh, pet project. We got a construction sign out there today and we hope to have that beginning in October. Um, so, uh, again, going down this list, the commission has. In many situations passed a resolution in support of some of these items. Some of these items are directly city items. Um, and they're all at various stages, but really it's just to keep everybody informed as to what's going on and, and where these projects can be found.
Okay.
Mayor, do you want me to go through each line?
Yes.
Okay, um. University Drive and Sheridan Street, um. That's a Broward County project. Some of those have already started. That's actually begun construction already. The turnpike projects, it's my understanding, those are slightly delayed right now. Mobility improvements, Dykes, Sheridan Street. Uh, some of those bike pad lanes were already put in. We got new bike lanes.
Resurfacing of the, uh, of the turnpike?
No, there's, there's various turnpike projects that'll pass through our municipal boundaries. Remember I pulled.
Oh, yes.
Every project that touched the city at Pembroke Pines in some way, shape or form.
Okay.
Um, Dykes Road, we put in new bike lanes up and down Dykes. We put in new bike lanes down one ninety-sixth. Those projects are both here. The Sheridan Street widening project, um, we've talked to the county on that project. That project's being split up into two phases. The first phase will be the multi-use path on the north side of the road, and the second phase will be the widening. Um, as I've mentioned to many of you individually, um, the plan is to add a couple feet of pavement on either side of the road. Reduce the width of the lanes to get that third lane in there. We have got a significant amount of right-of-way between, um, I seventy-five. And Flamingo Road. Uh, this will accommodate the traffic. It's a much-needed improvement, and that's being done through Penny Surtax. Uh, again, some various turnpike projects there. University Drive, uh, Johnson Street. Um, some of those improvements have already started. Um, I don't think, believe the bicycle lanes are fully in. Road resurfacing, there's an agenda item that's on tonight for that road resurfacing project, uh, from Pines Boulevard. Uh, there's an agenda item on here because there's some, uh. Items that we have to do with utilities with that.
Yeah.
City sidewalk projects, those are already in the surtax, and if you look at the other attachment from the backup, you can see where those surtax projects are. We have a whole sheet of all the county surtax projects in here. Pembroke Road. Douglas to University Drive. We've had a couple of public meetings. I know the Vice Mayor was there with, uh, residents from, um, Cinnamon. Uh, Cinnamon Ridge. Um, this project is widening Douglas Road from, excuse me, widening Pembroke Road from University to Douglas. Uh, there's some right-of-way that needs to be acquired. Uh, they're working with the various entities to do that. They're working with the association on walls and landscaping. That's coming forward. Uh, Pembroke Road, Flamingo to one forty-fifth. We recently had a public meeting about that project with Century Village. Um, this is a new multi-use path on one side of the road. New pedestrian crosswalk at the southern entrance to Century Village. Right now, there's not a crosswalk if you're coming out of the south side of. Uh, Century Village. This will allow them to walk over to Walgreens and the other places in that area. Alright, um, the Pines Boulevard US twenty-seven widening from one ninety-sixth. Um, FDOT has done the analysis on this. This project is not warranted. They were currently looking at alternatives. Um, to examine what we can do there. This is really a school problem, not a congestion problem. So there's congestion during school hours, but not congestion overall. Uh. They were looking at alternatives. Um, I started talking to some of you about this project, uh, the, the Michigan Left. Um, again, this is one of those projects that, looking in the pipeline, they're looking for alternatives to figure out how to tackle. What we see as a problem, um, out there, but really isn't a problem.
See as a problem?
Yeah, because the traffic counts don't justify the widening.
Well, I don't know. I don't know how they, I don't know how they calculate.
Well, they.
We have the traffic problem because of the schools, so they're saying it's not a traffic problem, it's a school problem?
They're saying that the traffic counts do not support the cost to widening the roads.
Well, what would support the cost of widening the, if, if school hours changed, they, they would suddenly be eligible?
It's not about the schools, it's about the additional traffic that would come from new development. There's no new development going on in that corridor. There's, um, there's no new traffic count that would increase the traffic counts beyond what there's, that's there today. So they've looked at the analysis, they've looked it out, they've actually be, gone beyond what they would initially do in this study. To figure out some alternatives. We asked them to look at turn lane improvements, we asked them to look at intersection improvements. And they've come up with at least one or two intersection improvements, um, but those may not be the best thing for our community.
Uh. I can tell you that the number one issue in Pembroke Pines is traffic. And I can tell you that the people in this city are urgent for this commission to take action to solve that problem or to alleviate it to a great degree. And I can tell you that three of us sitting here look at that traffic during school time all the time, and it's a problem. So if that's FDOT's view, um. I for one disagree with it. And I think that when we disagree with, uh, with. And I think that when we disagree with, uh, with an administrative finding, um, we should sit with our colleagues and explain to them that however it is that they are calculating, it's not doing anything for the taxpayer who pays them. And it, that's, that's part of the problem here is that, you know, and I have great respect for the engineers, but they just, they come up with these conclusions and, uh, we who are elected to, uh, uh, represent the people are supposed to just live with that. You know, I agree with that approach of the, the, we have been talking about widening Pines Boulevard from 196th to US 27 for over a decade. In fact, that was one of the projects that we were talking about, uh, with sur- surtax dollars. And maybe FDOT is suggesting that they don't want to do it, but somebody's got to do it because we need more lanes there, uh, to reduce volume during school hours. So how are we going to organize in order to achieve the project?
Mayor, I think it's important that when they do this analysis, they look at other projects that are coming in the queue. So we're all aware that the Pembroke Road expansion to US 27 is coming in the queue. Much of the traffic that utilizes Pines Boulevard going westbound in the mornings comes from the city of Miramar to you, get to US 27. They come up 184, they come up 196th. So when they put this model together, when we've talked to the engineers, they're factoring in the impact that that new expansion's going to have. Now, it's really important, you mentioned the decade, the better part of a decade. In the last decade, we've only built two projects west of 196 in that corridor. Okay? One of those projects was the, um, the tractor supply store and the other one was 125 unit, um, town hall project. Those are the only two projects that get added into the model when you're doing that calculation.
Hmm.
And that's really important because that's what FDOT is looking at. Then they're also looking at the future land use. So what else do we have out there? We've got the vacant land where the Eagles Nest is at. That's, we, I, I know how this commission feels about that property.
Right.
Okay? And there's really no other vacant land out there. Now, are we going to tear down single family homes to build townhouses? Now, I'm saying something extremely controversial for effect, but we're, that's something that we're just not going to do, right? So there's no new projects that are coming to that corridor that are going to offset that now.
And yet we have traffic.
But we have traffic during periods of time during schools, 45 minutes in the morning, 45 minutes in the afternoon.
Right.
Much of that traffic is probably going to be offset when Pembroke Road gets widened. There's also plans to widen Sheridan Street.
I'd like to see, I'd like to see a simulation that shows that because to be perfectly honest with you, I could see how the Pembroke Road extension once, once to 08 is then to Pembroke Road will, will, will help inner Chapel Trail with the Somerset issue. But West Broward is well west of that and you can't drop your kid off on Pembroke Road if they go to West Broward. You have to, you still have to go to the school. So Pembroke Road could, could have, uh, uh, eight lanes and it's still not going to change the fact that, that people, in other words, the only thing that can cha- that, that, that can alleviate volume on Pines Boulevard is widening the roads or, or getting more kids on buses. That's the only two ways that we have.
And Mayor, in that analysis, you're, you're missing one component.
Go ahead.
That component is the traffic that's currently coming up from the city of Miramar.
Right.
Moving north on to get to Pines Boulevard to get to US 27 because that is a big component of the traffic. So they avoid I-75s and they use, they utilize US 27 to go south for work.
Right.
Okay? The only way to get there today, you can't get there through Miramar, you've got to come through Pines.
Right.
So when that connection is made, the connection's going to come up from Miramar Parkway is going to connect to US 20, to Pembroke Road.
So let's say you're in Miramar, give, give me a specific example. So let's say that you're in Miramar, you're dropping your kid off at what school?
If, if you're in Miramar, wait, I'm sorry.
Cause if you're in Miramar, you're not going to West Broward.
You're not going to West Broward. You're going, you're going there for work. You're, you're commuting.
Oh, you're going, oh, you're going to Miami.
You're going to Miami.
They're saying that traffic will, will, will go up, uh-
That traffic gets dissipated. I, Mayor, we've had this conversation. Many of the people that live in West Broward work in Miami and they utilize US 27.
Right.
I talked to numerous people that live in Laguna, Chapel Trail, Walden Lake, even the new townhouses that were built Chapel Grove. Many of the people that moved to Chapel Grove relocated from other locations in Pembroke Pines so that they get closer to US 27 so they can get to work faster.
If you had three lanes on Pines Boulevard, I would buy that. If you only have two.
If you look at the-
And, and so one of the lanes is never going to change because they're dropping kids off at the high school. Are you saying that the equivalent number of Miramar, Miramarians that go to US 27 are going to free up the other lane? I don't, I don't think that computes.
Well, but you also have to dissipate it with widening of Sheridan Street. Sheridan Street's only two lanes right now going out to US 27, which is another project that's in the long-term queue. So when you put all these projects into the queue-
So they're going to add a lane to Sheridan Street, but they're not going to add a lane to Pines Boulevard?
Pines Boulevard is already at two with extensive turn lanes. So when they did the analysis, it does not prove the level of service to offset the cost that goes along with it.
I think we need to talk about this some more. Okay, let's, let's go to the next one. And then, and then, once I'm done with my questions, I'm going to give you all the same opportunity. Go right ahead.
So there's, again, as you go through this list, you'll see there's various projects. The Pembroke Road expansion, we've talked about this project extensively.
Which number are you on?
I, I jumped down about the bottom of that list because some of these are-
Twenty-four?
Asset management 24.
Yeah.
Pembroke Road expansion, that's a three-phase project. The first phase that'll be completed will begin as of today in 2026. It extends Pembroke Road from 196 to US 27.
Right.
Currently the delays in that project are because of South Florida Water Management and the height of the road and the elevation of the roads and also the Army Corps of Engineers. As you know, this commission back in 2017 approved a joint agreement with the city of Miramar. Miramar's the lead agency on this project. This is a surtax project.
So-
And if you look at your, your second attachment to this file, you'll see it is the largest surtax project.
Yes.
The second phase of that project is widening Pembroke Road from Dykes Road all the way to 196th. That's part B. And then the last phase of that project is extending Miramar Parkway up to US, up to Pembroke Road.
Right.
That's the third phase of the project.
And that'll, that'll, that'll be the bypass that connects to the artery.
That, exactly. So again, that project is scheduled to start in 2026. They've already done extensive amounts of, uh, planning, design. They've again, working with the Army Corps, working with South Florida Water Management. The city has allocated resources. We've swapped on land swaps with the city of Miramar. We've done everything on our part to move this project forward as fast as possible, but right now we are waiting on other agencies.
So you and I spoke on the phone and then, and then I had a conversation with the city manager about it. This project was supposed to be completed by 2024.
Supposed to start in 2024 originally.
Oh, right, completed in 2026.
Correct.
Now it's going to 2028. Commissioner Schwartz, uh, Vice Mayor and I were here for the, uh, Pembroke Road overpass. That project was delayed by well over 10 years. Uh, it was supposed to be, it was supposed to begin in 2006, I believe it was, and be completed by, no, 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 it was supposed to be completed by 2006 and it just went on and on and on. Once, once that, once that overpass went in, um, it was a life changer for, uh, for the West Pembroke Pines. It was a total complete change in the quality of life of the city. Uh, this particular project is probably the most important in terms of traffic alleviation. We have to complete the third east-west artery of this city, uh, because Miramar is landlocked to US 27. I don't know if there's, that there's another city that borders US 27 that can't access it. So in order to access US 27, Miramar is forced to come into Pembroke Pines. They have no choice. So, so connecting, connecting, allowing them to connect to Pembroke Road is essential to reducing the, the, the huge amount of traffic that we have in western Pembroke Pines, especially since, uh, Pembroke Road is not an interchange. If Pembroke Road was an interchange, that would have helped a lot, but no, we couldn't get that done either. So Mr. Dodge, I'm, I, I made this request during the time that we, uh, uh, were doing the bridge project. Could you do a poster and put this project right on the wall there so that all of us and the public can see when it is the Pembroke Road project is going to be completed? I want us to, I want us to see and have these completion dates. And I'd also like for all of us to meet, all of the partners, because there's a lot of cooks in this kitchen, as you, as you mentioned to me this morning and when we were talking about the project. You've got the county, you've got Miramar, you've got, uh, Pembroke Pines, you've got the South Water Water Management District, Army Corps. FDOT. Now you've got the Army Corps of Engineers. They make a great dessert. That, then, then, then you've got, I don't know, I don't know how many others. Let's all get in the room because I want them to understand how important it is both to the city of Miramar and to the city of Pembroke Pines, that urgency be applied to the completion of at least that portion that connects 196th Avenue to, uh, US 27. Very, very important. People cannot take it anymore and it's affecting the quality of life, uh, uh, out there. And I just want to make sure that these good-hearted people who work so hard and are so intelligent, so capable are infused with the urgency that this commission has to get this project done. So I look forward to, uh, uh, that discussion because, uh, uh, it's very important that they understand that this is not just something that we need them to do well, this is something we need them to do quickly. And I just think, and, and, and already we're seeing slippage with, uh, with completion dates and I have bad experience with these projects. They just drag on and drag on and oh, now we have to do another thing. And I remember with the Pembroke Road overpass, oh, it was two, it was two feet short on the designs and then they had to do the designs again and, you know, and, and we had to wait another two years and it was, it, so if you, if we can just get that up on the board and if you guys can organize that meeting, this is an important project and for my money's worth, I want to make sure that they understand that this be important to this and they get it. Uh, and other commissioners will have a chance to, uh, just to chime in. Let's go, let's go to the next page.
Some of these projects in this next group, I'm going to skip over the CTO because we'll hear a presentation about that in just a moment, but some of these are signalization projects that are ongoing.
That's fine.
Transportation operational mag projects that are ongoing.
That's fine.
Um-
I don't, we don't need to talk about the airport projects, those are counter-
Again, those are safety related projects there.
They really don't, they have nothing to do with city Pembroke Pines, but you, you put some in there because they were not within our municipal boundaries.
Yep.
Okay.
And, and basically that's, that's the listing of projects. Um, again, there's little small projects, mast arms, those types of things that are in here. Again, we pulled everything that we could find that was on any, within any plan and put it on the sheet. And again, we maintain this list on our website. We have a page called transportation where people can go to get information about transportation related projects, they can look at our master plan. Um, and we put notices there also, um, when there's public meetings for transportation related projects.
Thank you very much. One last comment before we go to Vice Mayor. The county asked us to do a surtax and I was out there, all of us were out there trying to convince residents to, uh, to vote in favor of the, the surtax. It was absolutely necessary in order to come up with the funds of, in order to, um, um, do the projects. However, they're choosing to approach this as pay-as-you-go, even though surtax is, is a recurring source of revenue. Um, why they've come to that conclusion, I really don't know. Um, all it does is slow down the production line for these traffic improvements unnecessarily. Uh, but I spoke to Mr. Dodge and he actually agrees. I'd love for the county just to give us the money and we'll do the project because we'll get them done quick and we'll get them done to their satisfaction and we'll bomb them if we have to. Now, all, all we need then to do is pay for it. So, uh, in your meetings and in your discussions, Mr. Dodge, am I, am I getting it right? So in your meetings and in your discussions, uh, I think that we should, we should start doing this because, uh, um, the urgency to get these traffic projects done is serious in our city and we, we need to avoid delays. So, uh, Vice Mayor, you're in next up. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I just, I would like, like to ask that, um, Mr. Stam goes over one other project here that seems to be, um, relevant, which is number 41. This is the inter, the overpass 75 being reconstructed along with a park and ride for, uh, mass transit. So I thought a real intense number, number 41?
Forty-one.
Yeah. Vice Mayor, um, I want to say that project was pushed back another year for design. Uh, they came to the commission, I want to say about three years ago, just before COVID with some preliminary plans. I know they had been working with Pembroke Gardens about how the parking ride to connect and I don't know if you remember, they had that really intricate, uh, loop underneath the overpass to get to the park and ride. Um, it's my understanding that they put out, that they pushed that project, um, the PD and E portion, um, and some of the public outreach at least out of at least 12 months, if not 18 months. That's my last update on that one. I can get additional information, I'll find out, but that's the last time I heard that. Um, I think that's kind of where one of the questions came up in the Monday memo. You know, how would this pro, how would the CTO impact, uh, the Pines I-75 interchange? I know one of the things that we heard collectively, I know, um, we had two new, Commissioner Rodriguez and Commissioner Hernandez weren't here at the time, but, um, I think I remember some, one of the commissions saying, didn't we just repair that overpass? And here it is coming back up again, um, to be re-looked at again, but this time in concert with the, uh, the, um, park and ride. Um, it's my understanding, all of that has been pushed out at least 18 months, but I'll get a formal update from them on it.
Yeah, I, and, and I bring that because this has probably obviously more impact to that, uh, overpass because it is the overpass. It's a reconstruction of the overpass, which means, um, a lot of construction in that area probably for nearly two years, probably.
I believe that's how long it took the last time we were in that intersection.
Yeah. So, um, yeah, I'm very, very interested in how that's going to impact, uh, the community. And of course then too, you spoke about, you know, some of the, uh, recommended, um, movements, we'll call it. And, uh, you know, the potential for that to create our own little mini clover leaf issue here in Pembroke Pines.
Yeah.
You know, is, uh, very, very realistic and very concerning. But, uh, we need to go through it. Uh, I, most of these I really kind of sort of clearly understand how to get information from, but, um, but I did want to ask if this document cannot be updated a little bit more. Um, you know, because there are some projects that are missing cost, even though they may say completed, it's still relevant to know what the costs were. I mean, because this is a good tool for us to communicate to our, uh, residents and, and, uh, other stakeholders about what is being invested in the city of Pembroke Pines.
Absolutely.
You know, and so having all that information is really necessary for me. Um, and the other, and the other category was, you know, the funding source. There's a lot of funding sources missing here. So for me, uh, and, 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 and trying to get to the goal of the mayor of trying to, you know, tie down what funds are the city going to actually take up, uh, I, I really need to know what the funding sources are for each of these because one of the things, Mr. Mayor, that you had brought, uh, to our attention in the very beginning, you said, you know, we got a, a $250 million transportation project document.
Yeah.
How are we going to do all that? Yeah, we obviously can't. Um, and then you referenced about, you know, pairing it down. Me, I'm, I, I, I think maybe we could prioritize because if we know what the funding sources are, you know, they're, they're-
It's a better word.
Yeah, they're, yeah. Because there, there are, um, like you say, very long lead times to get into things. It's a very, very, very important thing for all of us to recognize in order to access any, any dollars that are not the city dollars. Uh, they have various, uh, lead times that are related, uh, which, which could be, uh, you know, 10 years, which I would hope that some of the projects that we want to get done are not 10 years. And we do have opportunity to participate in, uh, application cycles and multiple, uh, multiple application types. So, um, the, uh, the other thing was, uh, was the school mitigation plan. I just want to just say, please don't, you know, lose sight of the fact that, you know, we, um, understand that there is a lot of, uh, traffic congestions out on the west side, you know, a lot of it primarily because of the way that these communities were constructed. on the west side, you know, a lot of it primarily because of the way that these communities were constructed. They're not open architecture. They're planned communities, one way in, one way out, which is creating a lot of the traffic uh stress. Um, and of course, and, you know, with the, with the number of charter schools that we have, which when you reference, we're receiving multiple or a number of people from outside of the area, um because they're probably going to these charter schools. But we have charter schools here on the east side as well. I mean, we have a very clear traffic congestion issue right here outside of City Hall, right here at the corner of Palm and Pines Boulevard, because we do have a charter school there. And it does have a great deal of congestion, you know, during those pickup and drop off times. So I would hope that those don't get lost in, 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 uh, in these reviews as well. The, the last.
Mayor, could I add one thing real quick with that? Um, you know, every, every October, we come to see the uh school enrollment. And one thing that we've been looking at with the school enrollment is we see how these schools ebb and flow. Um, the, the implementation of the voucher system and the impact that that's having on our schools, I think it's gonna be a pretty interesting tell. Is enrollment falling at some of these locations, um now that people can use vouchers for private school or for other entities? Um, we don't have a lot of private schools in the city. Um, so when I come see, when we get the October numbers, I think that's also gonna show, you know, do we still have twelve thousand kids going west of one seventy-eight? Do we still have eight hundred kids enrolled at the school across the street? Um, I, my gut feeling is that some of those numbers are gonna fall a little bit and we have under enrollment at many of those schools, which obviously changes how we do things. Um, so it's definitely something that's keen and always on our, our forefront when we're looking at it.
All right, very good. I, and I understand that too. And nowadays, the schools are open, sort of, anybody can go to any public school, whether it's a traditional or a charter.
But they have to take care of their own transportation.
But, but I do like the uh, the fact too, that we do have some newly elected uh school board members that we know that are very uh concerned about uh creating a more inviting traditional school system in order to maybe to take away some of that business too, right? So um, the, the, the last comment that I, I wanted to make was um there's, there's an item here that spoke to, I think it was like about a four million dollar, you know, city sidewalk projects, number sixteen. Um, and certainly this is targeting communities that don't have sidewalks and communities that are probably fifty-plus years old. And I, I very clearly am aware of what happens when you put sidewalks into communities like this. Um, you know, I planted that tree when my daughter was born. And that tree now is emblematic of that daughter who may be somewhere else. Or they may have created um, you know, conveniences for themselves in terms of how they use their property. And the sidewalks are very standard and don't care. It's gonna go straight here. So many feet off edge of roadway and it's gonna go right down the block. And anything that's in the way, we gotta move it. And so the very first thing that comes to my mind in this regard, and and I ask my colleagues to recognize, maybe this is something that we might have to bear a burden because this, this project seems to be done by cert tax. But there needs to be a community engagement component here. And I don't mean just uh, oh, hi, here's a flyer, we're gonna do something. I think it has to be a little bit more personal because there are going to be personal impacts to a lot of these folks. And I will tell you, the quickest way to get them to these meetings is to, is to ignore them. So um, I, I think it's very, very important that uh as this project moves forward, that we start thinking about how or what uh could be deployed uh for community engagement so that we don't um have people feeling as if we are insensitive to things. A lot of people like the safety, but at the same time, that's my daughter you're taking down. I'm telling you, it's a real issue. So.
Vice Mayor, there was a series of projects that were part of the cert tax for sidewalks. Um, obviously the Pines Village. Um, I don't remember the year, Mr. Dodge, you might remember, we did that, we did a whole survey throughout Pines Village, held multiple public meetings in Pines Village, which kind of laid the foundation for some of the water main improvements and some of those other items. And sidewalks was one of those issues because a, a big portion of the community does not have those sidewalks. Um, and I completely understand where you're going with that, that the continued outreach needs to happen. It started way back when and um I can't foresee us not even uh not having that type of outreach as we can move through that element. And by the way, it was a mixed bag back then. Half wanted them, half didn't want them, half wanted more safety, you know, because there were streetlights. I mean, there was a whole bunch of things that factored into that stuff. So we're definitely, you know, aware of it. And um I still have those conversations all the time with some of the residents on the south side of Pines Village.
Yes, sir. We will, we will continue to have those, the, those meetings as we move along. And let me just pause for a second to thank you for your representation on the MPO. Uh, uh, you're doing a great job and uh you're gonna have a lot of support from this commission uh for your advocacy there. Uh, we need these projects and we're in a hurry to see them happen uh because the people in Pembroke Pines are, are telling us they, they, they're, they're expecting us to deliver these projects. And so the urgency is there. And our partners need to share that urgency with us um um and uh get these things uh rolling. Commissioner Schwartz, you're next on the uh, on the line.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Stam.
Yes, sir.
All right, um, there's two things that you have to consider uh with respect to traffic out west. Number one, uh, the school board is looking at closing schools. That's gonna shift uh traffic patterns. Number two, state law kicks in next year where high school starts at eight thirty. So we're not gonna have the normal drive time. So if we're getting jammed up between seven and eight, there's no more seven and eight. It's gonna be eight thirty start time. So that's gonna, that's gonna shift the overall uh drive pattern. So um, I think the best thing we can do um is get the uh, the engineers to figure out what the uh drive pattern has been and how many cars will be off the road um with the later start time. Okay? Um, number two, um I think I still have the T-shirt when we opened the uh, the bridge there at Pembroke Road. Yeah, September of seventeen, if I'm not mistaken.
September seventeen.
So, yes.
Yeah.
So, um certainly, um the state of Florida just cannot properly fund projects in South Florida. They're, they're happy to take our toll money and then give it to someone else, but they don't bring it back home. So this full interchange in Pembroke Road has been um, uh, it's been just quite disappointing. So I, I think there's, I, I think there's an opportunity to get that interchange sped up at least. Um, an on or an off ramp in one direction would certainly be helpful. Uh, next, um I know the airport was, was mentioned, um county project. However, we have a planning and zoning board that actually reviews it. So um, I appreciate the inclusion uh and whoever asked the question in, in the Monday memo. I appreciate that. It wasn't me. But the um, uh, the improvements are, are safety improvements based upon um things that B-CAD requested. Uh, one of them is a uh, is a new um, is a new control tower. Um, an expansion of uh runway and taxiway improvements. Also, um pedestrian uh items to make the uh facility more uh community inclusive. So it will be coming to our planning and zoning board. Uh, Mr. Stam, are there any applications currently pending?
No, sir.
Do you anticipate them coming soon?
Potentially, um I hear sometime in the next six months.
All right. So I mean, in a relatively short period of time, right? So um as far as the, as far as the penny tax goes, remember, they had two cracks at the penny. Remember that? They did a half penny and a full penny. Um, I've always been suspect with the, with the uh, with the ability for uh bureaucrats to get out of the way of progress. And certainly, um, we continue to have problems uh getting projects in the second largest city in the county completed for no other reason other than, well, we'll get to it. And um, I welcome as many meetings and face-to-face meetings as possible. Um, Mr. Stam has been busting his tail uh at every, at every moment to get ju, stuff done. Um, I do want to thank uh Mayor Ordis for the time he served on the MPO. For that matter, um, Patty Good uh for getting uh Pembroke Pines front and center uh to get stuff done. So um, as far as our role um with respect to projects, um, I want to be able to get the stuff that we can control done sooner rather than later. Um my concern overall, um, Mayor, I, I know that there was a, a mention in the, in the budget about scheduling charter questions and that sort of thing. But my concern is if we're gonna consider going out for a bond, uh we can't get fifteen percent of the city to show up on a regularly scheduled um primary like yesterday. Um, to have a special one, which is an off-year, we've never had one in a um, I, I'm, I'm concerned that, that, that the very few may impact the very most, right? So a no is a no. Um, the good news is, if this is some good news uh with respect to incineration, because that's a US twenty-seven issue, right? Um, I had the uh, the honor of sitting down with the mayor of Medley. And um, the mayor of Medley wants the incinerator in his city and is advocating for it to be in his city and not at Opa-locka West or in Doral. And he has put forward a significant strategic plan in front of uh Mayor, uh, the mayor of Miami-Dade County. Um, and it is a county commission issue. Uh, neither one of us can understand why this northwest corner of Dade County has even been a topic of conversation because the mayor of Medley wants it in his city. And um, so um, I've opened up that door. Uh, there's an opportunity for us to help support his efforts that in turn helps our efforts. Uh, but, you know, it, it's amazing. Here in Florida, there's a meme that goes around. There's always construction on the Palmetto. I've been here thirty-five years. I don't think I've ever not seen an orange cone or something like that on a lane on the Palmetto. When will they ever be done with it? Now, the mayor and I, we grew up in the northeast. They used to get projects done because they had to because it was winter time. It was faster up in New York and Philadelphia than it is in South Florida, but we have like, you know, the best weather three hundred days out of the year. I just don't understand why it takes so long to get stuff done in South Florida. That being said, Mr. Stam, again, thank you and your staff, uh, engineer, uh Carl Kennedy and, and the city manager for doing what they can with uh, with a pretty tough ask. Thanks.
Mr. Shrum, great.
Thank you. Obviously, there is a lot for especially the newbies to learn, but I think one thing that would be really helpful just on um, on this portion of how we're presenting it to not only, you know, the people here, but anybody in the public. Um, the link to the website, I'm looking at it and it simply goes to the website of um, the lead agency on it. I personally know a little bit more um about the Matt Broward site and their um dashboard. Each of the projects does have a specific PDF link. Um, I know it'd be a little bit more um complicated to kind of find that for each of them, but if we could put those links adjacent as well um so that each of these projects does have a specific place to go to rather than simply mapbroward.com. Does that make?
We had that before, uh, Commissioner, but they uh were updating the links often. So we were fixing our links as much as they were fixing their links. Um, but uh, what we did do on the page, if you go to the bottom of the page, the transportation page, we put links to these other agencies and some of their reports to try to uh head it off at the pass. But we had it, it's, it's interesting you say that because we had it in the document that way originally and they kept on updating. Um, it was uh, it became, it became a little cumbersome.
Makes sense. Okay, thank you. Um, I will say for, at least for the Matt Broward, if we could link it to the dashboard specifically, that might be a little bit more helpful because you have to click on that anyway.
We um, what, what we're working on right now is downloading the separate project summaries for each one of these projects. And we'll have a project summary link. So if it's a Matt Broward project, here are the Pembroke Pines Matt Broward projects. If it's a uh, if it's a MPO project, you know, complete streets project, we're trying to summarize those files.
Okay.
So that you can look at them in completion, to see all of them together.
And I, I obviously I don't know as much on, on the F dot side or any of the um, MPO, at least for the Broward ones. I know they each specifically have their little summary from the dashboard. So if we could integrate that in some kind of way, that would be um, very helpful. But that's all I have. Maybe we'll talk um at some point, kind of more in detail on these projects. Thank you.
Mr. Shrum.
And I know this isn't on the city, but it's really discouraging to hear about US uh, the Pembroke Road uh uh, extension being delayed because I, I think Miramar is mayor to answer your question, I think it is the only landlocked municipality without access to US twenty-seven, at least this part of Broward County, because they all have access, unless maybe Weston at some point does not have access to US twenty-seven, could be. Um, and obviously we have a lot of our neighbors and we do love Miramar, but they also come through at morning rush hour. Um, so I agree with everyone on the commission that uh, I think, I don't know if you call it a joint meeting or, we, we need to emphasize to Commissioner Schwartz's point, we're the second most populous city in the county, that I'm, I'm happy with what I've seen on the document. I agree with Commissioner Rodriguez in terms of adding more links. I know it's a pain, but uh, anything that we could ourselves reference as commissioners, uh, but also that we could point our, our residents to. For example, um, I, I see some of my constituents from Century Village, uh, the Flamingo Road Greenway would be of interest to them. Um, and if I could point them to a link that shows the status of the project, although they see it out of their windows if they're on the east side towards Flamingo, that would be, also be helpful. But uh, US twenty-seven, um, the, the connection there, I think, will be uh, uh, life-changing for a lot of residents. What I don't want to see, uh, uh, and I'm, I'm with the mayor when it comes to Sheridan, when it comes to Pines and the possibility of having, or of widening them. What I don't think any resident, and I'm not gonna speak for Commissioner Rodriguez, but our districts are right up with one another. I, I think they'd be fine with widening on those major roads, but I don't think they want Northwest two hundred and eighth Avenue or two hundred and ninth widened. And I don't see that here. But I would just say, when you're talking about bike lanes, et cetera, they'll welcome it. But if you're widening those neighborhood avenues, um, I, I don't know that you will have as much support. I think you'll have the support for the major roads, but not for those uh, neighborhood uh roads. Commissioner Hernandez, if I could, um, before you're on the dais, uh, the manager held a workshop where we discussed possible intersection improvements at two oh eight and Pines Boulevard. Right now, for example, the turn lane doesn't have enough capacity. So that widening would not be like a full lane type scenario, but it could be a scenario where we increase the widening so that there'd be more room for the turn lane capacity. Because as you know, as people leave Somerset Academy to head back out on the Pines Boulevard, that stack goes back. So what happens then is the people that live in Malibu or the people that live in Dimensions and Chapel Trail can't get access to two oh eight. So some of that widening, maybe it's a, I hate to use this term, but the suicide lane in the middle so that there's, there's room and capacity to move when the schools are operating um in the morning. Um, and, and, and Mayor, we talked about this this morning. Uh, as you all know, Waste Management's building their new recycling facility down on two oh eight in Pembroke. As part of that project, they're required to build the southern portion of two oh eight. So um, from Pembroke Road north up to the police training facility, uh, Waste Management is required to build that part of the road. So, you know, there's these other projects that are out there that's part of a development project. Um, and, and again, just for the new commissioners, uh, we have kind of taken a new approach to try to get the developers who are making the impacts in these communities to be responsible financially um and obligate them to make some of these improvements as we go through these projects. So um, no, I agree with you, but at the same time, I think there's some components that could be had that would make, that would benefit.
Yeah, and I wasn't clear, but if you're, if you're talking about a turning lane onto a two oh eight, which I drive almost every day, I'm sure Commissioner Rodriguez is near there every day. Um, I, I'm, I'm fine. I'm just saying the actual avenues beyond Pines, beyond Sheridan, which are the major roads, I think you may have some opposition there.
Sure.
Um, but overall, I, I, I like what I'm seeing. It's just, again, I think to Commissioner Rodriguez's point, making this uh more prominent maybe on our website, uh, uh, being able to go uh, to our HOAs, which we have very often HOA meetings and they will ask, the number one question I receive when it comes to transportation projects is, what are they doing with Pembroke Road? Um, that's a big one. Uh, and the vast majority of those questions are, we want it extended. There are some that do not, but that, they're, they're in the minority. Um, and, and for me, it's almost, it's getting to the point of a, a qual, not just quality of life, but potentially a safety issue out there. Um, I did want to call attention, I know that uh, this has nothing to do with a transportation project, but Mr. Manager, just, I wanted to thank you for what you all were doing on one ninety-six, that curve by Encantada. Um, still a little dangerous though, letting you all know at night, there are some folks that are not paying attention to traffic laws.
But I appreciate what you all were putting out there to try to slow traffic down and add another layer of safety. Hopefully, that is not a problem once we can actually extend Pembroke Road. It's just, again, incredibly disappointing. I guess it's twenty twenty-eight now?
The project is scheduled to start as of today in twenty, beginning of twenty twenty-six.
In twenty-six and then be completed in twenty-eight, give or take. Yes, sir.
Okay. Commissioner, last note? And the other three questions have the benefit of this.
Just to clarify, so they're saying that the section that goes of Pembroke Road that goes out to US twenty-seven will be completed by twenty-six.
Start in twenty-six.
But there are three phases, and the entire three phases will be completed by twenty-eight. But the one that's most important to us in terms of getting folks out of Pembroke Pines. They're saying now it's twenty-six. Originally, that was scheduled for twenty-four. And, you know, that's why I want it on the board so that we don't forget when, when, when things are supposed to happen.
But to be clear, you mean the entire connection? Pembroke Road?
From one ninety-six.
From one ninety-six.
They're telling us sometime in twenty-six.
Okay. The commission during a visioning workshop, the manager had city engineer Carl Kennedy discuss three or four local road improvement projects. One of those projects was the two oh eight project, possibly extending the turn lane to create more capacity at the entrance. Another one was widening one ninety-six between Pines Boulevard and Pembroke Road. And then there were some other minor projects continuing to away, those minor projects that were out there. But those would be localized projects, city projects as opposed to projects that fall within.
Right. And there's also that, the entrance or what used to be, Mr. Manager, the area in Encantada. That their HOA has spoken to me about leaving the community. And I know the fire chief and I have discussed whether it's something that the police, that, excuse me, I'm mixing departments, that the fire department needed. So that's another, I need to talk to you about that one. I've received a lot from the Encantada HOA, so I did want to bring that up to you.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Good discussion. We are jumping around a little bit today in order to accommodate some tight timeframes. Raise your hand if you're here from MPO to present on the overpass. Okay, okay. Raise your hand if you're here from the pension board. I see you. Okay. You'll be next after that. But first is Gabriella or Daniela here? Can you come forward, please, and would all rise for the pledge? And then are you Daniela or Gabriella? And then Daniela, who is the current Miss Pembroke Pines Queen? Oh, that's your sister. Oh, you're the former junior Miss Pembroke Pines, is going to sing the national anthem. If, wherever you want, and whenever you're ready, you can lead us in the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America. To the public which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. And this is Daniela, Daniela Perez Ortega. We're ready for you.
By the sun, the light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last wing. Whose bright stars and bright stars through perilous fight. Oh, the red marks we watched were so gallantly streaming. And I can't read your lips, oh, but bursting in. Gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say that star-spangled banner yet white. Oh, the land of the free.
Thank you so much, Daniela Perez Ortega, former junior Miss Pembroke Pines. We love starting the meeting off with young people showing their skills, and you're very, very talented. Thank you very, very much. Okay, MPO is to make a presentation. The Broward Metropolitan Planning Organization and the Florida Department of Transportation. Will present the summary of the Pines Boulevard and Flamingo Road Center Turn Overpass and the results of a feasibility study. Mr. Sam?
Michael Thamis is city manager and director of planning and economic development. Today, Mayor, we have.
Can I, I'm sorry, there are two speakers from the public that wish to speak first. George Corin, on this project, excuse me, I'm sorry. George Corin, you are recognized. Please bear with me. Mr. Corin, your name and address for the record, please. You have three minutes. Mike, can you help?
No, okay, thank you. My name is George Corin. I live at sixty-seven fifty-one Southwest Eleventh Street in Pines Village. And good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and everybody. I'd like to speak on two items. The first being, I am one hundred percent in agreement. The traffic proposal on the table is not the solution to our problem. It would ruin the city's landscape, be very confusing to our elderly and city visitors. An accident or repair to a ramp renders it useless. Would mean people would have to go straight in either direction and for however long it took and make a U-turn to get to where they wanted to go. The cost is beyond real, and it must be stopped before it begins. The second item I have is Pembroke Pines is facing a very serious problem with North Perry Airport. The rapid increase of operations over the last twenty-five years. Has made life increasingly difficult and dangerous for its surrounding residents of Pembroke Pines. Excuse me, Miramar and Hollywood. Residents have long complained about the toxic emissions from piston-engine aircraft. Lead, CO2, and particular matter commonly known as PM. Guess I need a drink of water. Here you go. And also the noise that they create. Over the last twenty years, our government has identified and verified the existence of same. The harmful effects from exposure to these elements. Broward County Commissioner Beam Fur became the founder of the North Perry Airport Community Advisory Committee. To provide a communication conduit between Broward County Aviation. And the cities of Pembroke Pines, Miramar, and Hollywood and their residents. The residents want specific testing of their neighborhoods. The cities of Pembroke Pines and Miramar submitted resolutions to Broward County Aviation Department in support of this testing. To date, we know of no formal reply or what has or will be done. To. Will be done. References to the tests at other airports have been mentioned. But the uniqueness of North Perry Airport, population density, playgrounds and athletic fields. Homes at the ends of runways. They're just hundreds of feet off of the runway.
Let's, let's, let's find out the answer to that question. Mr. Dodge, I recall the aviation director here, I think it was a year ago or so. Was going to put thirty thousand dollars, as I recall, into the budget to do a air test in and around the North Perry Airport. Do you have a status on where that stands?
My understanding is they did set aside the money, but I do not believe anything has been done at this point.
Okay, can you do me a favor and can you call the county manager and ask where that is? We were promised an air quality study for the residents. It was supposed to be budgeted. Can we get a status of where that is? And if you could just let us know what the answer to that is, okay?
Yes.
We will get back to you, Mr. Corin, and we thank you for speaking.
Okay, and I'd like, if I may, add one more thing.
Yes, sir.
And it would be, I'd like to see Pembroke Pines take the lead in asking the hard questions. As to what's going on and when we might see some action.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may just follow up as, you know, we're looking to get the. That information from Broward County, and thank you for asking for that. The other thing is, if we may be provided with, is the study that was independently done by Fort Lauderdale on their airport.
Sure.
And I believe that's done and maybe we can get a copy to all us as well, too.
Mr. Dodge, if we, without objection, if you could ask for that record.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Vice Mayor Good and I were at a B C A D Town Hall last month. They made a presentation in Miramar, hosted by the city of Miramar. Vice Mayor Good and I were the only electeds there. Director Mike Natamaker made a pretty thorough presentation. One of the things that they have been doing, Mayor, is environmental testing when any construction was being done. So soil samples and all that good stuff, right? And they, they've been testing that. They've been going through Broward D E T, Broward D E T. And there hasn't been any cases that stops anything moving forward. So air testing, I know it was budgeted, but they've been actually getting into the dirt right there on the field itself. And nothing has risen to the level of requiring environmental engagement.
I appreciate that information. Mr. Dodge, if we could get those reports as well. On the, on the land quality, the environmentals, the Commissioner Schwartz.
Mr. Natamaker can provide, I'm sure, the PowerPoint to see manage Dodge and distribute it with the commissions.
Wonderful. Thank you. And if we could also get the reports and the PowerPoint, that would, that would be very helpful. Thank you very much for that additional information. Scott Barnett, you can go forward. He will be our last speaker before the MPO presentation. And if you could. State your name. And your address for the record, please.
Scott Barnett and Chloe Barnett, one nine three four six Southwest Fifth Street. First, before we begin with this, I just want to take maybe ten seconds for a moment of silence for Robert Young.
Yeah, I was going to do that.
Oh, okay. Well, I'll let you do it next.
Let me stop the clock.
If you want to take that.
Robert Young, who was actually an applicant for the District Four City Commission seat, passed away. He was eighty-eight years old. Bob is an institution in the Chapel Trail area, one of the original homeowners there. I've known him for twenty-plus years, always. A very, very caring neighbor and a very dear friend of Chapel Trail and of the city of Pembroke Pines. Very, very devoted to the city and would reach out to all of us from time to time. And he passed away. His wife predeceased him. And we want to wish his sons and his entire family, his grandson Hunter, and all of the Youngs well. If we could just have a moment of silence, please. Bob Young was eighty-eight. Thank you very, very much. I'll start the clock again. Go right ahead. You don't have to, we have your name and address.
We're simply here to say thank you, Mayor, for supporting. We're going to be doing a presentation of a new film we created called Women of the Watershed. Which highlights the Everglades. Mayor, you stood on the stage with my daughter when she graduated from Pines Charter High School.
We all did.
And we all did. And this is a project we've been working on for a number of years that finally came to fruition. And aired on South Florida PBS early this year in March. Chloe, if you want to say a few words.
First off, I would like to express my gratitude for having this opportunity to share this project that we are very passionate about. I know that on this commission, there is a lot of effort, you know, to protect our environment, and that is something I deeply appreciate as well. And I will encourage everyone here, if they could take time out of the day, September third, at Pembroke Pines Charter High School, where I once graduated in the River of Wrath. If you could take time and watch this impactful documentary.
And start at what time?
It is at.
It's six P M.
Six P M.
September third at six P M.
Doors open at five thirty.
And the name of the film is?
Women of the Watershed.
And it's about?
And it's about women in conservation who have been, I would say, neglected over years as their stories have not been told. And they've played very integral roles in Everglades restoration and conservation. And it's just giving a voice to those as well as advocating for our Everglades and our environment.
Well, we're very, very proud of you, and we thank you for everything that you're doing to promote environmentalism in our community. And I will be there, and city commissioners, I hope that you'll be there as well. And Mr. Manager, if you could, Mr. Barnett can be contacted so that we can get the word out through our TV station and our social media. It's important that we all show up at the Susan B C A D Theater on September third at six o'clock to see this amazing presentation, which was. It's actually an award-winning presentation, as I understand it from PBS. You all produced it, and we're very, very proud of your work. So we'll be there.
Mayor, if we could do an outreach to Alligator Run, Bergeron as well.
Absolutely.
I think that would be really nice to happen.
One last word. I do have some bad news for all of the males in this forum and everywhere. Women are on the rise in leadership positions, so be prepared.
That's not bad news for me.
This is the year of the woman, and we're seeing those changes. So congratulations to all these women who are making great strides. So we're very proud of them. And myself as the husband to a beautiful woman and three daughters, I'm well aware of the fact of where I stand in this world. I do want to make one quick point. The Everglades begins in Orlando and ends at that water fountain right out there. So the important message of this film is how our waterways are connected. And it's important that we know that. Weather Commissioner J.C. Bermudez of Miami-Dade County says that Everglades National Park is the only part of the Everglades. We know that the Everglades is a large watershed that's connected throughout all of South Florida. So it's very important for our clean drinking water. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Christina Sorenson, Assistant City Manager as well for helping us set it up. So thank you very much.
She's terrific.
So thank you, everybody.
Okay. Without further ado, the MPO is up.
Mike Thamis is city manager, director of planning and economic development. Mayor, commissioners, tonight we have representatives from the MPO, the Broward MPO, as well as from the Florida Department of Transportation. To discuss the center turn over past project and your options moving forward. So I'm going to turn the presentation over to Peter.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Peter Gee is with the Broward Metropolitan Planning Organization. And before I begin my presentation, I think I'd like to give a little bit of context of who the Metropolitan Planning Organization is. What role we play, how we represent you, and what our role is in the entire process. So the Metropolitan Planning Organization exists to prioritize federal and state funds. And also do the long-range planning of the transportation network. So you'll see here on screen, we have our Route to Twenty-Fifty Long Range Plan. We are looking out twenty-five years in the transportation network. But really, our role is to make sure that we're representing a local voice in those transportation decisions. Because those federal and state dollars typically get spent on large roads. So in the case of the conversation tonight, we're looking at Pines Boulevard and Flamingo Road, which are both owned by the Florida Department of Transportation. And it's important for me to emphasize that we are here to represent the city's interests. We're a broker between the Florida Department of Transportation, who is the engineering and construction arm. And we're the planning arm, but also the coordinating arm in this regard. and we're the planning arm, but also the coordinating arm in this regard. So a lot of the context that I'm going to give is going to talk a little bit about the history of the project at Pines at Flamingo, why it was identified. And then I'd also like to hand it over to the Florida Department of Transportation, who's going to give you an overview of the technical analysis that they have completed in evaluating the alternative that we've been exploring at that intersection. Before I begin, also, and move on to the next slide, it's important to note that there was, uh, previous work done at this intersection. About twenty years ago, there was a, a few solutions, I believe about four or five alternatives that were looked at. And those solutions were found to be unacceptable to the commission, uh, based on the design. And the projects and the, uh, that location itself had kind of sat dormant for a little while. But there is definitely a problem that we're going to see at that intersection, and my, my slides that I'll, I'll speak on in a moment are gonna highlight that. But I want to emphasize again that the solution that we've looked at was taking into account that those previous solutions were unacceptable. So the one that we're exploring is one that we thought might be a little bit more innovative. We have, uh, it, it's something that has, i- is, is really there to try and address the core issue of that intersection. And I'd encourage you all to keep an open mind as we're looking at that solution. But I'd also like to emphasize that you've got plenty of opportunities to provide feedback. But we also want to hear from you, and we want to hear your honest opinion on this, because that will impact then how that project travels moving forward. So, uh, I see also that the slides are moving up there, so I will let the clerk know when it needs to move forward. So I'm setting a problem statement here. We all know that Broward is growing. Uh, we're expected to have three hundred and thirty thousand more people by twenty fifty. It's gonna be well over two million in Broward County. That equates about sixty-six hundred other people a year, five hundred and fifty people each month. Not necessarily gonna go through the rest of the statistics, but you understand the problem here. And Pembroke Pines is one of our sort of bedrock, bedroom communities in, uh, in Broward. And we know that a lot of folks are moving to this area, and, uh, you all are the second-largest city, probably going to be the first-largest city come a decade from now, um, in the next census. So we look at transportation.
That's not on our plan, but go ahead.
Sometimes, uh, that, that growth is inevitable. And I think that's what we're trying to account for, uh, when we look at the transportation network, is where those flows are moving. Where do people live? Where do they work? And what does that look like out into the future? So if we could move on to the next slide, please. So the intersection in question is Pines at Flamingo Road. And if we move on to the next slide, uh, you'll see some of the analysis that we did as part of our last long-range transportation plan. The map that you see here on screen is household density change, so how many households we expect to be within these analysis zones, which are the blocks, the squares that you see here. I've highlighted the intersection of Pines at Flamingo, uh, in the center of that yellow circle. And the darker blue color that you see indicates a higher density of households that we expect to be in that area. So that includes people and also households as well. So we see at that intersection that there's gonna be an increase in density there based on our transportation model. Also, in the next slide, uh, you're going to see future traffic conditions based on that. Again, in, in this, uh, slide here, I've highlighted the, uh, intersection of Pines at Flamingo Road in that yellow circle in the center there. The darker color red that you see, uh, and the oranges are ones where the volume over the, where the, the volume of the roadway is going to exceed the capacity of the roadway. So you can see, uh, on, on many of the approaches, we're dealing with volume and, uh, capacity ratios that are going to exceed what's currently there. So again, we know this intersection is a problem, and we know it's gonna be a bigger problem as we move into the future. So if we move on to the next slide, uh, we'll discuss a little bit more about why we looked at this intersection specifically. I've mentioned the household density change, and I've also mentioned the traffic conditions. We've also looked at safety at that intersection, and it is ranked as the second-worst intersection in Broward from a safety perspective. Uh, and then also, what makes this, uh, a good candidate for a future improvement is that it is an intersection of two-state arterial roadways, which means that there is a lot of funding available out there for the state to, uh, to implement a solution to address the, the concerns of this intersection. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned, there were quite a few alternatives that were evaluated about twenty years ago. And when we took another look at that intersection, understood how, what that failure rate is gonna be at that intersection, and how crucial it is to the network, we decided to take a second look at the potential alternatives that we could look at out there. Uh, and rather than doing a full-blown overpass where you would grade-separate the entire intersection, there is an innovative concept that's on the table, uh, that has been suggested by Maryland Department of Transportation, where you simply elevate the left turns. Because oftentimes, by eliminating one of the movements at grade and then elevating that, you can increase the capacity of that intersection, but you don't necessarily have the same impact on land and aesthetics as well that you would get with a traditional grade separation. So what happens here is that the left turns get elevated to a second level, and the movement, the actual traffic signalization for the left turns happens at the second level. Cars make their turn and then come back down to head in the, in the direction that they're moving into, where they're making that left turn into. One of the advantages of one of these center turnover passes is that, uh, in addition to the smaller footprints, they also help increase the bicycle and pedestrian environment and make it safer. So it also, uh, addresses the safety component of that intersection. And the reason why that's safer is that at grade, there's less movements happening. There are no left turns happening at grade. So that's one less movement that a pedestrian or cyclist has to worry about. In addition to that, it breaks up the length of the crossing, because if a pedestrian is crossing, they have a refuge in the middle of the roadway, uh, that would then provide them a little bit of time to make that crossing, rest, and wait for the next light cycle to get across, rather than having, having to do that all in one go. So if we move on to the next slide, um, we approached the city commission back in twenty nineteen, in December of twenty nineteen, regarding this project. And that was part of our long-range plan to basically, basically say, can we prioritize funding for this project and move forward through the analysis and study? And our commitment to you all, again, as the coordinating agency and as a broker between you all and the F D O T, we said that we would be coming back to you at almost every point in the process where we're touching it, and we'll share the analysis with you and also give you an opportunity to provide feedback, and if you so choose, to kill the project as well. We understand some of the hesitation the commission had with the project. Uh, it's very new, innovative. It's a large investment. Granted, it is state-funded, so there's no local funds that are being expended here. Uh, but we understood some of the hesitations that the commission had. So where we are now is we've completed a feasibility analysis of that alternative. And the Florida Department of Transportation is here today to share the technical analysis and the results of that. Uh, and then also, we would like to hear from you in terms of your feedback on that technical analysis and the solution, and then see if we can move on to the next stage, which is called a project development and environment, or P D and E, which is a formal, uh, i- it's, it's a more formal study, moving on from the feasibility study, where you basically get the project ready for design. That does not mean that the project is gonna be designed tomorrow or built tomorrow. That P D and E is a formal process that the Florida Department of Transportation follows, and you all would be an integral part of that process. And at the end of it, there's going to be a preferred alternative that will be presented. I do want to be very blunt and upfront with you all that the solution of a grade-separated improvement, most likely a center turnover pass, is going to be the solution that will provide the most relief from a traffic congestion perspective at this intersection. There is a possibility to look at some at-grade separations. However, the benefit cost analysis for those improvements, I'm going to make an assumption based on that, but just knowing how built-out that intersection is and how much right-of-way you would have to acquire is likely not going to provide you the traffic relief at grade without doing a separated, um, intersection at this location. That said, you all can let us know if you do not want us to look at a grade separation, and we'd much rather save that money and the taxpayer money and not necessarily do the full-blown P D and E and potentially look at some smaller solutions, if that's what you all want. But again, I'm going to emphasize that you're still going to have this problem as you move forward ten, fifteen years out, if you don't necessarily look at a larger, longer-term solution. We're also not here to force a solution on you. We want to hear from you, but we're trying to broker the best deal possible where we're addressing the problem that's out of the intersection, but then also taking into account, uh, your, your local preference and what your communities would like. If we move on to the P D and E, there is another step, the design phase after that. That likely would be five years after the completion of the P D and E next year in twenty twenty-five. From there, construction would probably be another five years out. So it would be a good ten years before the improvement is actually built. But I think tonight, what we would like to hear is, what would, what do you think of this solution? Can we move forward to a P D and E? But if a grade-separated solution is absolutely unacceptable to the commission, we would like to hear that from you tonight, so that we don't spend any more of that money evaluating that alternative. So with that, I'm going to introduce the Florida Department of Transportation, who's gonna go into the technical analysis of the, um, center turnover pass and what they found through the feasibility study.
Okay. Your name and affiliation for the record, please.
Good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Luis Costa, and I am a consultant for the Department of Transportation, where the engineers that were tasked with, uh, evaluating the center turn overpass alternative at this intersection.
What's the name of your firm?
Colliers Engineering and Design.
Thank you.
Thank you. There was a previous slide, but, uh, basically, we looked at, uh, two alternatives of this center turnover pass. One, which is the, the, the most, uh, beneficial in terms of traffic, would be elevating all the left turns, uh, to a second level, uh, which is what you see on, well, you don't see it on this. Sorry, can you? Yeah. No, it's just that I'm seeing something else on, on this screen. I apologize. So what you see here is the, the first alternat- alternative, which is, uh, all left turn movements are up above in the second level. Uh, it, uh, has the advantages that it, uh, addresses the level of service concerns that, that we have today. Uh, it, it does achieve, uh, a level of services acceptable for a feral highway. It has good benefit to cost. However, it does have some access impacts to adjacent properties, which I will talk to, uh, a, a little later in the presentation, if you would advance to the next one. The second concept, it helps the access management concerns that we have in that it leaves down a grade left-turning movement, uh, for all approaches. So you still elevate a majority of left turns, but you leave down below an opportunity to make left turns for northbound, uh, or southbound, either one of the westbound, eastbound directions. So that, uh, reduces the impacts to adjacent properties and still improves the level of service. It's not as good in terms of level of service, uh, as the first alternative, and the benefit to cost therefore drops. Next slide. Uh, what we tried to do from a structural standpoint was to keep the intersection as open, uh, open as possible and as pedestrian-friendly as possible. As Peter mentioned before, uh, this gives an opportunity to shorten the crosswalks for pedestrians, making it safer with a refuge area in the areas where the, uh, overpass, uh, is up above. It requires a very significant structure, uh, most likely a steel structure about nine feet in depth, which means the, the, the approaches to the intersection have to be raised quite a bit, and that, uh, has to be, ha- has to start from quite a, quite a, uh, distance away from the intersection with retaining walls up to the, uh, the intersection itself. Uh, as you can see on this rendering, we try to portray what, what it would look like in, in real life dimensions, uh, this center turnover pass. You can see, uh, towards the far end of the image, the retaining walls as it's climbing up and then tying into two spans of a steel bridge in all directions, keeping side distance open, uh, and, uh, allowing, uh, traffic to see what's coming in the other direction. Uh, as you can see, we didn't propose, uh, a column in the middle of the intersections, uh, as that would introduce a, a safety hazard, and it would make it, uh, less attractive. Next slide. So this is zooming in to the intersection in terms of what the traffic level of service, uh, impacts are. What you see here is the existing condition. We're already re- reaching a saturation level. You can see the intersection is at level of service E. What that means is that, uh, it's near saturation. Level of service F means saturated and failure. Uh, so something needs to be done. You can see there are movements already, like the left turns at level of service F. And obviously, you experience that on a daily basis. If we go to the next slide, we have, uh, forecasting, if you lower it a little bit, the, this are twenty-fifty-year, design-year forecasted traffic levels. And as you can see, the intersection fails altogether. Most of the movements are level of service F. And, uh, you know, it, it, it's, uh, something needs to be done. So basically, the no-bill condition, uh, is, uh, ultimately gonna fail. Uh, next slide. So here we have the alternative one with all elevated left turns. Uh, it achieves the overall level of service D for the intersection for both A M. and P, and P M. peak hours. Uh, it has an overall, uh, uh, all movements in the, in the intersection worked, uh, properly in the year twenty fifty. Uh, but again, we have access impacts to the adjacent properties, shopping centers. There's the Park and Ride facility and, uh, Hospital Center, uh, to the north. Uh, so going to the second alternative, which is the next slide, uh, you can see, we, by maintaining the left-turning movements down below, we accommodate better access to the hospital, to the shopping centers, uh, to the Park and Ride, et cetera. But the level of service drops. Uh, we do achieve a level of service overall D for the intersection, uh, which is the target level of service, but the left-turning movements operate at level of service F or D, uh, or E. I'm sorry, F or E. So it, it's a downgrade to the level of service. The benefit to cost drops. It's still an improvement over the no-bill, and, and it still addresses some of the concerns, uh, related to traffic. So, um, on the next slide, we describe the existing access management conditions. And if you slide it up a little bit, thank you. You can see the, the legend where we have, these are existing driveways near the intersection where they have, the green arrows show full access. So they have right-in, right-out, left-in, left-out access. Uh, there's not that many. There, there's already a, a pretty decent access management plan that was implemented, uh, in, in the corridors. So some of the driveways are already restricted. They have left-out prohibited, or they have right-in and right-out. And you can see by the color coding where those driveways are located and, and the kind of, uh, format that they have. The next slide. We do have, uh, we're showing in this slide the most significant impacts to access, uh, which happened with the alternative one, where all the, uh, left-turn movements are raised. Obviously, you cannot make left turns, which means to reach certain driveways, you'd have to either, uh, go further, make a U-turn to turn in, uh, or, or, uh, you know, try, uh, uh, different, uh, access points from, from a different driveway. So these are the most significant ones. You can see what, what ends up happening is that we have to turn some driveways into directional. For example, the Park and Ride would have only right-in and right-out. No left-turn movements into the Park and Ride facility. Uh, the Flamingo Pines Shopping Center, same, would have directional access only, uh, with right-in and right-out. Uh, and you can see, it, it does have some impacts that need to be, uh, considered uh, as potential factors in a, in a determination of what is a preferred alternative. Uh, the next location where we have concerns is, the next slide, is northeast to the right of this picture. We're showing, uh, Flamingo Road as it approaches the hospital complex. And we have, uh, the access to the Memorial Cancer Institute, because we're on a retaining wall section and elevating it. The only way to get in would be a right-in and a right-out. No left-turning move, movement into that property. So just to, uh, make sure the emergency vehicles are still going to have access as they normally do at any intersection by just making a left with their flashing signals and et cetera, at grade. So that's not gonna be, uh, a concern. Uh, we do have also other driveways further north, north for the hospital emergency, you know, emergency, the, uh, emergency access. Uh, and we do, uh, have a, the driveway that goes into their parking garage that is also getting affected by limiting, uh, whether it can be, uh, a full access or, or, or a restricted access. So those are points we wanted to make. So those are points we wanted to make because they are obviously, from an access standpoint, not as good as the existing condition. And obviously in further studies, other alternatives, we also have to consider this. If you go to the next slide, this shows our very early long range estimate that we did. It shows the project cost at $39 million. It is an expensive structure. We have not included right away costs, although we anticipate right away costs to be relatively minor. They're mostly, you know, narrow strips on the northeast and southwest quadrants. There's also question about the roadway movements that are there already. So again, right away impacts should not be that significant. And the next slide. I'm going to let Humberto Arrieta, he's the FDOT project manager, to wrap it up.
Thank you, Luis. My name is Humberto Arrieta. I'm the FDOT manager assigned to this project. As Luis has been explaining and Peter has been explaining, we have two alternatives. The alternative one is slightly better in terms of the level of service that we provide. Alternative two has less of an improvement in the level of service. You can see the alternative two doesn't need the benefit to cost ratio. Next slide, please. I mainly want to talk to you about where we stand in this process. I want to reassure you that we're here to get the feedback from the city. We're not here to impose. We want to work with you, whatever solution, you know, is the best solution for the city. That's what we're heading to. I'm a public servant. My best interest is the interest of serving the residents of the city. So the next step, if we decide, if the city decides to move forward with this, would be the PDNE study, which Peter referred to. That would come on next year. I will start getting ready to finalize this couple of work so we can advertise that next phase of firms can comment based for that. In that process, this would be one of the alternatives that we'll be looking into more detail. This won't be the only one. There'll be other alternatives to be evaluated. Usually we have three alternatives that we evaluate. This would be one of them. So by no means, you know, if we move forward, doesn't mean that this will be the final selection. So we look at the alternative in many areas. Traffic, social impact, environmental impact, cost. We do a matrix, we evaluate it. And then we'll have a workshop in which we'll invite the residents to come and see all our, the alternatives that we have refined and give us their feedback. And from my part, I'm available to you all for another meeting. I can come back as many times as we need to. You have my contact information. You can reach me through email or you can call me. We can set up a workshop to see what the city ambitions to have if we move forward as the other alternative. So that's my pledge to you. I thank you for the opportunity to be here and present to you. Do you have any questions?
Yes, thank you very much. And I want to thank all of you for your presentation and for your dedication to helping us with this problem. Commissioners, if you don't mind, I'm going to start off and then, and then everyone will get an opportunity to share their point of view on the project. And I want to, and I don't want to shed any sincerity in my thanks to all of you for your work. The City of Pembroke Pines does not want an overpass of any kind. We consider that to be inconsistent with the quality and the standards of our community. We take a great deal of pride in the city and its quality of life and its character. And something along those lines simply wouldn't work for us, for me and for the residents who I've talked to, and I've talked to thousands of them. And you won't find any fans of this project in Pembroke Pines. I haven't met one yet. I'm sure there's some, but I haven't met them yet. Let me, let me, let me sort of go through the reasons for this so that you sort of understand it. Some of the presentation, I really, I'm intrigued by. So I have never once heard that Pembroke, that Pines and Flamingo was the number two most dangerous intersection in Broward. That's, that's news. When I was first elected, it was the most dangerous intersection in America. I want to tell you, I'm from New York City. I don't believe that. I didn't believe it then and I don't believe it now. But back in 2004, I think only me, city manager Dodge and the city attorney were here when, when the NPO planned their first overpass. And this was an express overpass. It was all the way through and then you could continue to do your turns on the ground level. I voted against it then because we don't want any overpasses. And the, but that one at least made more sense to me. In other words, if you wanted to escape having to stop at that light, this was, this was a way for you to get through that incredibly busy area faster. So that part made sense. The residents had no appetite for, for an overpass. You've got residential communities there that would be affected by the view. You've got a nature trail that is coming right down Pines Boulevard. And I can't think of anything more inconsistent with a nature trail than an overpass. And it's just, the whole, the whole character of it, it's just the wrong town for it. And when this was first presented back in 2018, I was very thoughtful in my questions, very, very direct. And I asked the NPO, so how much time will this save us as we go through? Because there's this, there's this level of service A, A, B and F. And I think you only get level of service A when you get to heaven. And then B is really, really nice, but there's no one, no one lives there. And then C is sort of acceptable, but it's not really an urban number. D, E, D, F and E is what, is what happens in cities. And I asked him, so what's the difference if we built this thing? If you all built this thing, what would the difference be? He says, well, you could probably get through the intersection somewhere between two and four minutes faster. Two and four minutes faster. And when I speak to residents, they say, traffic is, is my number one concern. I want, I want you all to, to work on traffic. But if you're going to give me an overpass, I'll spend the two minutes on the road. I'll spend the four minutes on the road. I'd rather do that than have an over, than have an overpass that will scar the middle of the city. And, and I hear the same thing Vice Mayor and Commissioner Schwartz with respect to the university overpass, which he didn't mention, but I still think it's on the table, right? Or that one was scrapped? And why was that one scrapped?
I'm sorry.
University, there was one plan for university in Pines. That's been scrapped? Why was that one scrapped?
So the, the reason why that one was actually put on hold is because we said we would want to build this one first before we do the other one in order to understand the traffic impacts before doing two back to back.
And while you're there, let me ask you, so where else has this been implemented successfully?
So in the United States, it has not been implemented anywhere, but there have been.
So we'd be the first?
Correct, yes.
Okay. So here's, here's what happened back in 2004. And I want to thank you for being straightforward with this because you're trying to help and I respect the hell out of that and I want to thank you for it. But in 2004, it was a three, two vote. Me, Commissioner, I remember it. It was me, Commissioner Cyple and Bill Armstrong voted no. Mayor Otis voted for the overpass as did Commissioner Ferrendino. And the minute we told the NPO, no, they came back and said, okay, we're going to give you turn lanes. They gave us additional turn lanes in each direction. And suddenly Pines and Flamingo was no longer the most dangerous intersection in America. And we didn't have to have an overpass. For my money, for my representation, I want you to use that same ingenuity to find us an answer. We want, we want to see every intersection improved, but we, we have no appetite in Pembroke Pines for an overpass anyway. It would change the character of the community. And that's just something that the residents here do not wish to see. Not next year, not in 2040, not ever. And so we have to think through what we can do. We know that there's a lot of traffic that passes through our community on the way to somewhere else. Maybe Cooper City wants a left turn only. But I have to tell you, even, even, even this concept of the left turn only, it just doesn't compute for me. So let's say you need to go to the cancer center and you just happen to live in Century Village, where very few people have cancer because of course it's well known that this, you know, the people in Century Village are amazingly healthy. So they, they, they get on this thing and now they get, they have to turn left and then they have to cut across in order to get into, in order to get into their hospital. It just doesn't compute. It will disorient people. It will confuse people. This is why it's not been built before and we're not really the town to try it in. Now, I'm very open to being wrong about this. Show me, go build it in another town. Let me go and evaluate it. If it really, really makes sense, we'll bring it back and we'll show it to the residents. And this isn't going to get built to 2040 anyway, so we got plenty of time. But I don't, I just don't think, well, I'll be there, I don't know about you. But, but it just doesn't make sense to us right now. And that's what I'm hearing from residents. That's what I'm seeing with my eyes. That's how I voted for it before and that's how I plan to vote for it now. But, but, but the rules have changed. So the last time it was, if you, if you say no go, we don't do the PDNE and you don't get the overpass and it's over. But now I'm hearing that there's some flexibility. So if we vote for the PDNE and then we don't like the PDNE, which is going to cost you how much?
It would be about a million and a half.
A million and a half dollars. That you'll spend a million and a half that you will then allow us to make a decision having spent a million and a half. I would feel guilty asking you to do a study on a thing that I just have no confidence in. So I, my, my view is this thing just doesn't work in Pembroke Pines and I would rather you use your talent, your time, what money is available to find a feasible answer to the pressing traffic questions in our city. I just don't see this as being the answer. Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And you're, you're right. If people start off with the impression that they don't want this at all, it's, it's not going to take off. But I, I want to share a little bit of an experience. So how many people, have, have any law ever tried to go on the Sawgrass Expressway and get onto 95? You got to go through Deerfield Beach. It's called 10th Street. It's like a serious traffic jam.
That was Century Village that did that. Ask Mr. Gordon.
So, so I, I want you to know that I spent five years on that project and you have members of the NPO and the FDOT will attest to the fact that I had a direct involvement with the development of that 10th Street connector project, which is basically connecting the Sawgrass Expressway to 95 so that it would alleviate all that traffic and people would still be able to, you know, have greater mobility. And it did, you're right. So I just want to bring some perspective. So what happens was 30 years ago, right? They build a Sawgrass Expressway and for some reason it might not have gone where it was supposed to go, but somehow or another it ended up right there, you know, at Deerfield Beach and they never finished that connector. Why? Because there was a fellow by the name of Armando Trintella, Trincella. His name is Trinci. Anybody who knows Trinci from back then knows that he was a powerful political player in the North Broward community. And you know what he said when they came and they said that? No way. And he killed the project. Took 25 years for that project to come back. And what happened was when it came back, it came back under a different perspective. There were multiple stakeholders that actually created a group. And there was all kinds of conversation about what, what could be done that would not destroy the character of a community. And I can tell you that those meetings probably lasted in and of themselves, probably a good two, two years plus. But, but it was very, very important because the very first, the reason why Trincella said no way is because they were going to, you know, do the elevated version from like 595-ish. And, but, but they, when they got back and they started working with a whole bunch of stakeholders, whether it be the community, whether it be DOT, whether it be the NPO, whether it be other agencies that had an interest in this because that was very, very important to create some movement. So what happens is an idea is formed and they were going to build sub roadway, right? Because Deerfield Beach did not want to lose the character of Deerfield Beach. So they said, okay, we'll go underground. So they were going to have like an open, open tunnel underground with tabletop crossings for the intersections. And, you know, so that seemed to be a reasonable thing. And so people, you know, the, all the group and DOT folks, as I believe it was Humberto, who said, you know, they'll, he'll be here as many times as necessary. And that's what FDOT did. They were there as much as necessary to discuss that project. But as that project moved on, you know, the project got moved more into something that the city of Deerfield Beach didn't like. It went from underground to more and more above ground and more and more type of elevations and things like that. And I'll be honest, DOT said basically, we're going to do this and we're going to present this as an preferred alternative. So that project went before the NPO. And there's a fellow by the name of Bill Gans. He is the mayor of Deerfield. And through Bill, Mayor Gans and other members of the NPO, they actually denied this project. And that project got kicked back and there were a lot of very hurt feelings in that, I'm certain. But what happened was everybody came back to the table again. And what happened was they finally found the solution that met the objectives of the city and still met the objectives of the transportation issue. And now I believe that project has finally been funded. It's, I think it started out about a $750 million project, may still be that, maybe around there. But they really addressed a lot of the city's issues, whether it be aesthetics, whether it be access issues. Because they even, one of the things, you know, is they even created service road improvements. And we didn't see any of that here, but there could be service road improvements that kind of address some of these issues. But you weren't going to know that until you go through the process and, and at least vet it out. Because if, if we say no, now I will support this commission, whichever way you believe is the best way to go. But I will tell you, it'll be 25 years before we come back to this again. And I, I mean, we heard Mr. Stam made a very, very clear comment about how all these transportation projects have a very, very long lead time. This is part of the reason they do a feasibility study, then they do a PDNE and then they do design and. and then they do design and then they do, and then nobody's talking about the funding acquisition and you know, how does the funding get into play here too? So um, you know, I'd like for us to just give some consideration, Mr. Mayor. I, I very clearly understand uh, what you're receiving from uh, people that you're talking with and representing them. I just ask that we consider that maybe because that's on the table. Um, and, and, and I wanna make one other thing real clear. You know, we're not just talking about the left turn, they keep talking about grade separation, that's a very important word. Grade separation only means one thing, means it's elevated. And you could create, and I'm just off the wall here saying, well, what if you just had the overpass over Flamingo? Just for straight through cars, not both directions, but maybe one direction. Maybe that could work and move vehicles. Just, but you, you need to have an engagement with the conversation. And Mr. Mayor, one of the things that I would recommend is that maybe we create, i- if we do elect to move forward with this, that we do create a group of people made up of important stakeholders, when in our community, you know, leaders within those surrounding communities uh, to participate in engaging the DOT, the MPO, whoever it is that it is. And, and like I say, I remember doing that on a monthly basis. And I mean, I spent a lot of time and it could be done again in order to get to a point where there is a potential to find a solution. And if it doesn't exist, then we don't proceed with it. But I um, I just know that it will take a very long time to receive monies for a substantial improvement to this intersection if we choose not to go forward.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Thank you, um, obviously we're fairly new on here and no critique at all to what you guys are doing, much appreciated. Um, and my, what I'll bring forward is mostly from books that I've read from online, honestly TikToks and Reels, because that's how I get my information. Um, but I just wanted to, what I think was said off the top by um, our mayor is that we don't want an overpass, we don't want that great separation. And that was what, when I saw this, that's the first thing that I thought, I don't think that that fits our community. What I also would like us to kind of go into consider is how does, how do we mitigate the clash of this kind of project with the other kinds of plans that we have going on across Broward? We have um, with Broward um, Transportation, their primo plan. Where do we fit these parts into it? Because one of the things that I know I came into this commission wanting to better is not just the safety of the people in cars, but the safety of the people outside of cars. Because many times we just, okay, let's expand a road, let's make it bigger, let's make it wider. That will reduce traffic to a certain amount, but cars going faster kills people, kills pedestrians, kills cyclists. So I think, you know, when we go in, if we say yes, um, as has been suggested and we kind of go further into these studies, I will not vote for anything that makes it any less safe for a pedestrian and cyclist, whether it, you know, takes the car a little less time. Um, my, I, I know that that's my priority and my focus. Um, for example, just in the diagrams there, we saw a keyhole bike lane. So you're still gonna, a car still has to cross a, a bike lane to get to the um, to the right side. So that, to me, doesn't scream safety in, in a sense. And it, that's kind of been disproven, if we put uh, green paint on a road, doesn't mean that anybody sees it anymore, especially at night. So making sure that we're really taking into consideration that safety of everybody else as well as the concept and more progressive thought that maybe more cars on the road isn't how people are gonna be getting um, to work, to, you know, the groceries for the future. I know, at least my generation, there's a lot more people that are thinking, should I bike, should I walk? Is there public transportation? And I know on this dais, we're trying to make that happen within our city. And I don't necessarily want the, the worst that we do now in increasing public transportation, increasing bike lanes, doing all of that, including the primo plan with Broward County, to just be squashed because we put something like this in, in, in ten years. Um, so I guess those are my two cents and I, I will um, let my other commissioners speak. But those are the things that, you know, without knowing too much um, details about this kind of stood out to me. As well simply, what, what is it worth two, four minutes of going across an intersection? Because although it wouldn't be money that's coming out of our personal pocket, um, or at least our budget, it is money that is coming out of taxpayers in general. And you know, we wanna be good stewards of our own funds and also the funds of everybody else that our decisions impact. So, you know, I, I don't think that this is worth the money, um, because I'd rather stay there a little bit, you know, more than spend for close to forty million dollars. And you know, maybe there's something that we can do, just invest that money theoretically, because we can't just move it around. But invest, invest that um, into more cyclists' lanes, into better sidewalks, into just different options for people to get around that doesn't necessarily mean more cars.
Thank you. Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes, Commissioner Rodriguez and I are, are the two new commissioners. Um, even though we, we've both been in the community sometimes, she's worked in Broward County Government, I've worked in Miami-Dade. I worked with our, we changed it for some reason, it's not an MPO, it's a TPO down there. Um, I think that's a branding issue, not that it means anything different. Um, and I, I, I worked for the county mayor while we were implementing what was called that SMART Plan, the SMART, uh, the Strategic Miami Area Rapid Transit Plan. Um, I, I, I just, I, I agree with basically everything that's been said here. Um, particularly because right across the street, and I'm sensitive to it, is it Century Village where you have an elderly population. Um, and, and I'm, I'm very concerned about the impacts in that area. I, I also wanna state that I've, I've worked with the MPO as a private citizen. I, I, when the penny tax was brought in, I went and I helped train your public information, municipal public information officers on how to communicate projects countywide with your populations, no matter which city it is, but particularly for Spanish language speakers. So I, this is not a knock on any of you, your, your, your fine professionals, your, your engineers. I just don't think this fits the community. Uh, at the appropriate time, what I would like to ask is what do we do as a city? Uh, because at the same time, I, 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 we need solutions for that intersection. I just don't think this is the one. But mechanically, I guess, up here, that's at the appropriate time, I'll ask the mayor, I'll ask the city attorney, what would we do? But I, again, I appreciate your work, I really do, uh, I, all of you, I appreciate your work, your explanation was very thorough. Uh, it's just, this is not a project I can, I can support.
Commissioner uh, Schwartz? Thank you, Mayor. I'm good at math. Um, I would ask my colleagues to consider the following. Uh, back in twenty nineteen, it was a four to one vote. Uh, to Vice Mayor Good's credit, his argument, five years, can you believe it's been five years?
Yeah.
Since we've had that conversation. It was a collegial conversation, it was pretty similar to tonight. It was a matter of, we have to be in line. If we're not in line for the finance, then we'll never have a shot at the solution. And so it was four to one. Shortly after that, there was the voters got to decide on a vision. Five years later, some things have changed. What hasn't changed are what my residents are looking for. And I think what Vice Mayor Good's residents are looking for. And that's to be solution driven. We can't say that we wanna reduce traffic and not give other agencies the opportunity to provide this projects that may actually work. Now, I was interested in that subterranean um, issue and I think that um, years ago, before I even got to this dais, there was, the city, the city was, was looking at doing something that had never been done before for any city in, in Florida. And I went up to the podium, I said, you know what? I said, I love the fact that, that sometimes the city of Pembroke Pines likes to jump into the pool, be the first one into the pool. But the question is, is there water inside the pool? You gotta look first, you know? I appreciate, I really do appreciate the opportunity to be a trendsetter. I don't know if forty million dollars is a trend I wanna set without having um, a viable um, solution. I don't wanna create a problem. However, I also wanna give FDOT an opportunity to prove themselves. So, maybe the solution would be, instead of us getting this in twenty forty-five, maybe it's in twenty fifty. And let other communities give it a crack first. But if we say no tonight, um, there is absolutely no solution on the table. But if it's a stable future, we can't even talk about what the future's gonna look like. The one thing that I'm a little disappointed, and it's not a shot at the presentation, because they only can control what they can control. But we have a hospital. And what goes to hospitals are rescue vehicles and those rescue vehicles change timing of lights. And um, it's a very busy medical facility, which I envision the mall being gone. Amazon's gonna just wipe out box retail. I don't see what's currently there now, there twenty years from now, I just don't see it. It's just not gonna be there. I don't see cars on the road because they'll be in the sky. We're gonna have drones, they're already, they're already working on projects in downtown Miami, moving people through drone technology. We are becoming more, we're moving more towards pedestrian-friendly transportation and modes of transportation. And the everyday guy just doesn't go to work every day because they're not gonna drive thirty miles when they have Zoom. We have, we have micro-communities that were doing density projects because people are walking. So I don't know if the right decision tonight is to say no. I think our decision would be yes, the funding, not to be the first, and let's continue to explore solutions. I don't wanna turn down the opportunity to solve something. And maybe, to Vice Mayor Good's point, maybe the other communities that are watching what we do, maybe they come up with the same conclusion that it's not for them either and let someone else go first. And that's okay. I don't think there's anybody here tonight that doesn't wanna solve traffic. I don't think there's any one of us that don't wanna have that. So I'm a pilot. I spent majority of today looking at the Pines Turnpike Intersection and trying to envision what this will look like um, across from C.B. Smith Park. It doesn't look right. And I don't think it works um, with the way that um, it's being presented. But I do think there is a solution. I also believe that um, this particular intersection is truly the economic driver of our city. When you wanna talk about economic development, it's not residential in this, in this sector. This is the destination for how we employ people. Memorial Healthcare is the largest employer in our community and it's gonna continue to grow. Um, I'm not really sure um, what twenty-five years from now looks like. Can you imagine what twenty-five years looks like? Can anybody? Think about what we were twenty-five years ago. Right? The technology, the advances and that sort of thing. Um, I'm in favor of holding a spot. I'm also in favor of not going first. So um, there's no action for us to take tonight, it's a matter of them getting a consensus. There's no vote, there's nothing on, on the agenda for us to do, they hear what we're saying. And our residents believe that we wanna solve traffic. But I also wanna make sure that the taxes that we do pay, the federal government, the state government, that we bring them back home. We would, we would be saying no to that opportunity to Commissioner Rodriguez's point. It's not wasting tax dollars, it's collecting the dollars that we've already paid to give it back home. So I think there's an opportunity for the MPO, for the, for the penny surtax. We have no idea when Pembroke Road Interchange is gonna be fixed and Pembroke Road's gonna be connected and Sheridan's gonna be widened and how this is gonna impact things. That's not in the presentation tonight. And I left out the fact that FDOT is gonna be redoing uh, the I seventy class intersection for a lot of different reasons, and that's also delayed, Mayor, as we know, it was supposed to get started already on that. So is this twenty-five years from now? Or is it thirty or thirty-five? We just don't know. And to pledge, to pledge dollars, I mean, can you imagine what the CPI is on this? It's forty million today, what's it in twenty-five years? So um, I'm, I'm with Commissioner, uh, I'm with Vice Mayor Good on this, I, I wanna hold our spot in line. And um, there's no action we have to take. I, I, I think the one point five million, it doesn't benefit, it's not a waste for us. Because that one point five million is gonna be used by all the other cities in Broward because it's the same study, all it is is just changing the name of the road. It really is, i- if, correct me if I'm wrong, sir. But if, if we have an intersection, a major intersection, with the same amount of traffic, does it really matter if there's McDonald's on the corner? No, it's, it's a matter of traffic flow, right? Um, and again, we have no idea, there's no reference to what our friends in Miami-Dade County are doing. It's Flamingo Road, man. So they, they can, they can have some development to our south that makes this thing not even, not even workable. They can cripple us, right? So we're far enough south county, but it's what they're doing in Dade County. And that uh, that TPO, I don't know, they have their own toll exchanges and stuff, it's crazy that, that we, that Broward and Dade do not talk to each other. They're, they're, they're in a silo. They spend their money, we spend our money, and then nothing connects. And for the next thirty-five years, there's still gonna be orange cones on the Palmetto. That's just how it works. So, I mean, those are my thoughts, Mayor, I, 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 I think, I think that, I think that we were, I mean, five years ago, I thought we were, we were in the position of, let's, let's hold the money. But aesthetically, I'm, I'm with you on it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes.
I was giving some, Commissioner Rodriguez, did you wanna say?
I just wanna clarify, um, obviously we're not making a decision, but to hear it from you, would it be possible for us to say, yes, keep going on this, to further evaluate, kind of hold our place in line, but kind of the condition that we don't necessarily want an overpass? But I don't, I don't know what the?
So, so, so I've been, I, I've been tossing and turning in bed about this for about, oh, six, seven years now. And here's what I think. Um, and maybe, maybe you all will, uh, will agree. Um, if the decision was, you have to go along with this in order to keep the money in the pot. Um, and if you vote against it, the money in the pot disappears, I'd vote against it. Because I was here in two thousand and four, we voted against the project and then you all came back with something again because you need to solve something, we all need to solve something on uh, on, on that intersection. So I don't buy the, 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 you got the, you have to stay in line. Uh, it's not about the money, it's about the solution, the solution doesn't work for us. But I'm certainly open to um, finding the correct dialogue to communicate to you. We'd like you to go back to the drawing board. We'd like you to start from scratch. This project doesn't work, hold on to the money. Let's just start looking at what else we can do uh, that isn't an overpass. Because that's not a solution to us. I'm intrigued by the Vice Mayor's idea about the tunnels and whatever, I don't know how that would work on uh, there, but I, I don't have a problem looking at, at, at that as a solution. It could, it could very well be that that's the solution, I really don't know. For all I know, that costs four billion dollars. Uh, uh, maybe we can bring Elon Musk down here and he'll, and he'll, and he'll build a tunnel for us, I don't know. I, I hear he likes to build tunnels.
One of his favorite things.
Yeah, tunnels and spaceships. So at any, at any rate, the, the, maybe that's the answer, I don't know. But if, 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 if I'm pushed to make a decision, Commissioner Schwartz, between an overpass from Pembroke Pines, or not saying, which no one wants, or a, for all the reasons that have all been articulated here, or um, or we lose the money, I'll lose the money. And we'll, cause we'll go. And because we'll go we'll go fight and get the money back. But if the offer is, let's take a half step back and recalculate and go back to the drawing board and see if we can't keep this project alive in some other way. I would be open to that, so long as we take this overpass stuff off the table. So I would like to speak to the guy from DOT. The fellow from DOT, the project manager.
Mr. Mayor, may I just respond just briefly from the MPO's perspective of this? Is that all right?
Fine.
So first off, thank you for the honest conversation. I think this is exactly what we needed to hear and all of the concerns on this. Perfect. That said, I want to be realistic about if we take the overpass off the table. By no means are we forcing any solution. But just a quick example, my wife and I were having a conversation because she supports my car hobby and she knows I'd like to install a lift in our garage. Why don't we just lift the ceiling? We could lift the ceiling and gain another foot. But really, what we need to do is if we want to lift the ceiling, we got to lift the whole roof. But that's a huge project. And I think you're in the same position here where doing at-grade solutions, I want to be very realistic, are not necessarily going to get you to the same outcome that an overpass would. And I'm simply setting expectations. That's it. If you would like us to take a look at at-grade solutions, and I think you heard it from the DOT, it is something we can look at. But I think you're not necessarily going to get the outcome or the or the the solution to the problem that you're trying to address.
But it'll be better.
It it could be. I can't make that decision just yet. It could be.
I'd like you to take a look. I for one would like you to take a look at better. Because what my dad used to tell me was sometimes better is the enemy of good. You know, we all want the ideal and we work it toward the ideal and then we give up something that would work. In two thousand four, we gave up a an overpass by the narrowest margin of vote on this commission you could have, three-two. And we ended up with twenty years. For all I know, that can be extended to twenty-five or maybe even longer of a very workable scenario. Yeah, that's a complicated place. Pembroke Pines is a very popular location. We don't want an overpass. You're hearing that from us. So what I want to do is I want to try and craft how we communicate that to you. Ideally, we can communicate it to you where we tell you that what you have in mind really just doesn't work for us, however thankful we are, and we are. But that the money stay in place and we think about some other solution. So I'm asking you, is that a feasible approach or is that off the table?
I will turn that over to DOT for them to
Yeah, that's why I was calling.
Mr. Mayor, definitely that would be an option if we go to the PDNE phase like I was explaining before. It would it would not be just one alternative. Just to clarify, I can't do a PDNE on just one option. It will have to be several options to compare.
You're talking about the the overpass.
Or any or any other
Are you prepared to do a PDNE that doesn't look at any overpass?
I'm fine with that. Oh, I'm fine with that. But but we have to you have to be clear that that there's got to be more than one alternative. And going at grade has some implications, too. The only way to expand that intersection is piping that canal right next to the C V Smith Park.
Okay.
But we don't have an issue with that. We are required to look at several alternatives.
Then then maybe what we should do is entertain a city manager, Mr. Dodge, you tell us in which way we can adopt, we can draft and adopt tonight. My understanding is you want to go on the street pretty quickly with this PDNE, correct?
I have to execute it next year if I'm to stay on schedule. So I need to start drafting drafting the scope of work soon.
Okay, so so it's not like that between here and the next city commission meeting, we could create a resolution to you that would be acceptable in all respects, that would hold the money there, that would allow you to do PDNE, but that eliminates your you're looking at an overpass.
That could work. Like I said, I would be available to to the permission to whatever team you put together.
Then I would say I I'm reading consensus unless someone says no. My suggestion would be that you and the city manager or his designate get together and decide what language needs to go into a resolution that carries this out. I want to say it again because I don't want there to be any confusion. That we support your going to a PDNE that does not include any overpass options that would improve traffic performance on Pines and Flamengo. Is that acceptable to you?
That is acceptable.
And under those circumstances, the money can stay in place for Pines and Flamengo. Correct, MPO?
Yeah, yes, yeah.
I need I need you to I need you to say the magic words.
If you if you give us that direction, we will move forward with a PDNE that does not include any overpasses for consideration, and that's what the money would be used for.
Okay. You satisfied, Mr. Attorney?
I'm listening carefully. I'm going to craft an answer as soon as you ask.
Okay.
I I would just like to go back to a comment. We understand that this isn't going to be optimal for what we're trying to get to. However, at least my hope is that with this doing slightly better and working in concert with every other opportunity that we do have the pre-mil plan, more bikes, more buses, we get to that best option. But at least I I want to just kind of put that on the record. We we know that this isn't going to fix it all, but the goal is to get little by little, like we get somewhere.
Understood. And I my job is as a public servant to just let you know and be as clear as possible.
Okay, so do we have a consensus or do we Do we need to have a motion? Do we? I I sense that there's a consensus to send these good people to meet with the manager and his staff so that they can craft a resolution for us at the at the next meeting on this matter.
Mayor, respond, Mayor. Thank you. Couple of observations. Two things that are very critically legally important. Number one is that this item is actually on the agenda.
Right.
Second thing is that there's backup related to this item that's already online, has been made available and meets the forty-eight hour rule under the county charter. Number two. Number three is is that there the public is here. Should the mayor allow public comment, which I would suggest that you open briefly?
Right.
Then a motion would be in order to direct that a resolution be adopted consistent with whatever meeting occurs between the DOT, MPO, and the city administration to accomplish the purposes which I heard the both the MPO and the DOT commit to on the record, which includes the minutes of tonight's meeting.
Okay, the hour the hour is getting late, so we have public comment on this, and then we have a long agenda.
Yeah, I'll move. Yeah, I'll move the the city attorney's comments as part of the record to get a second public to fill in this way we can get it all wrapped up.
Okay, is is there a second to that motion? A second by Commissioner Rodriguez. All right, so we have a motion on the table for the direction to ask ask both staffs to get together and together craft a resolution for the for our next meeting that keeps the money in place, takes overpasses off the table, and sends us back to study some viable ground level options. Is there any public comment on this? Yes, sir. Come forward, please. Your name and your and your affiliation for the record. There's a button that says talk or speak.
There you go.
Yes, sir.
My name is Wendell Lindsay.
Yes.
I am representative. You are the second largest city in in Broward.
Yes.
I represent the first largest city in Pembroke Pines.
Right.
Century Village. So I just want to to make the statement that we agree because I represent the people that are going to go to that hospital. And we can't have an overpass that surpasses the hospital and goes beyond it or that forces the traffic to go make an immediate right turn through traffic to get in because that's what's going to happen. So there has to be some alternatives. I like what Vice Mayor Good suggested that you get people from the community involved in this decision and this type of thing. And I would say that there would be people from Century Village that would agree to do that, would like to do that. And I will throw out just one session, one suggestion that I'm sure nobody's looked at, but there's a very famous roundabout in Paris. I don't know how well it works, but it but it's been there a lot of years and it does work. I'm sure you have to have free driving to get to that, but that's that is an alternative to look at.
Thank you very much.
They do have tunnels for pedestrians in that one, though.
Yes, they do. Any other further comment?
Yeah, Mayor, maybe since, I'm sorry, I was going to ask the FDOT if they can figure out how to get traffic to move faster on nine ninety-five.
Let's one at a time.
Automation.
One at a time. Public comment on it. Right, come forward, please. Your name and your address for the record.
Yep, Matthew McIntosh, six oh one Northwest eighty-second Avenue, apartment five thirty-one, Plantation, Florida. I think the council has made a lot of good discussion here tonight, and I appreciate the presentation. This one thing I just want to emphasize is that bike lane is not safe. When you think about a bike lane, you should think who rides a bike? That could be anyone from a kid to an elderly person that lives nearby. If you look there, I mean, does that look like somewhere where you would be okay for your five-year-old kid to be riding a bike by themselves? I don't I don't think so. It's not something you would see in strange things, for example. I'm just saying, you know, bike bike lanes aren't just like dress, like a topping on a road. It's just like its own form of transportation. For some people, it's not the alternative. It's their it's their primary. So just something to keep in mind. Any alternatives that have at least a protected bike lane? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion to direct? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. So I thank you for your presentation. Please get together with the city manager and we look forward to a a resolution we can adopt at our next meeting. Thank you so very much for your for your discussion. And I also want to thank people here from the Fire and Pension Fund. You're up next. City City Attorney, could you read item number nineteen?
Nineteen. Yes, Mayor, if you will. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. Number nineteen for the record is a motion to pass proposed ordinance number two thousand twenty-four dash eleven, our first reading, which is an ordinance to the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, amending the city's code of ordinances related to the city pension fund for firefighters and police officers by specifically amending section thirty-four point fifty-six subsection N of the city's code of ordinances entitled Board Established Powers and Duties to amend the investment powers and authority of the Board of Trustees of the Pension Fund, providing for codification, providing for conflict survivability, providing for effective date. Item number nineteen, which is item twenty twenty-four dash eleven on the floor, Mayor and Commissioner, for your public consideration. Thank you.
Commissioner, as as part of my getting to know the city now as as mayor, I made a visit. I was actually invited to visit the the Fire and Police Pension Fund where I learned that I was the first mayor ever to appear before that. And that was nice and we talked. And we had a very frank and very, I think mutually supportive discussion. Their success is essential to to the city and the and and the role that they play in protecting the retirement of men and women in uniform is is essential. They have been performing about as well as you could hope for under the investment policies of the city to date. However, you need to know that approximately thirty thousand thirty million dollars in city tax levy, which came to about not quite half of what we collected last year, went to the pension fund to offset their losses. Losses that they experienced because we have been very generous to police and fire, and I'm exceptionally proud of that. I want them to have a great retirement. However, the fund, we've been told this, not just by the commission auditor, but also by others, has required us to insert a lot of money. The state of Florida is going to change the assumption of 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 interest that by lowering it. And so we don't know the number yet. We just went through a budget where where city manager told us he's collecting about a hundred and one million dollars in in city tax revenue this coming year. It would not surprise me based on the discussions that I've had with him and with the pension fund and also with Mr. Rothstein that we'd have to pay upwards of forty million this year of that of that amount. The only thing that can offset that, because we're not going to go back in time, we can't go back in time. We can only go forward in time is for the the fund to have the leeway that it has been asking for. This item that's before you today came from them asking for this city to free their hands so that they could earn more interest on the nearly one billion dollars that they manage on behalf of the retirees. It's about nine hundred and fifty million right now, not quite a billion dollars. I dare say that if we pass this item today, it 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 could exceed a billion dollars a lot quicker. And by doing so, it would reduce the amount of money that we have to kick in every year. This is the investment policy they've asked us for. This is the tool that they've asked us for. They want to perform at an even higher rate than they're currently performing, which is acceptable by every other standard. Except that our expenses, and I'm proud to say it, are beyond what the standard is. We are very generous in rewarding our men and women in uniform in retirement, and I'm very proud of that. But the way to get make that more workable so that there's more money on the table to deal with today's issues rather than retirements is to free their hand in their informed opinion in this way. And this is what this investment policy does. So that's my introduction on it and before we discuss it, I need to have a motion in a second. So does anyone want to move this item to discussion? It's moved by Commissioner Rodriguez. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Hernandez. Discussion.
Is that for us?
Yes.
Okay. Mayor, thank you. The last time we had, Vice Mayor, forgive me, I don't remember if you were a part of the board last time that we had. So you weren't. So it was Mayor and I. The five of us, it was it was unanimous. We we moved going from Moody's A-rated to flirting with like a high B-plus type of thing. The discussion then was to ensure not the not the risk of gain, but the conservative of loss. As a part of that discussion, we went ahead and earmarked a commission audit report that was produced in June of two thousand twenty-three to review the investment strategies, performance, and how it's impacting all the citizens in Pembroke Pines, including those who are participating in the plan. The question, Mayor, that I would have of the presenters, have they read and 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 did any analysis on the commission audit report? Because I see nothing in the backup that indicates that it was looked into by the by the pension fund.
Who will be representing the pension board and
So it's more of a question before I get into the detail of of the document.
Your name and affiliation, please. If you could just turn on the there's a button, yes. Your name, your name for the record and your affiliation.
Banca Greenwood. I'm the attorney for the pension plan. Excuse me, I lost my voice. Some people think that that's good for an attorney, but sometimes it can be a bad thing. You apologize.
There's an unopened water there if you'd like. There's an unopened water there if you'd like.
Oh, thank you, thank you. From Klafter Kaufman and Jensen and Levinson, seventy-eighty Northwest Fourth Street, Plantation, Florida, three 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 one seven. Also here today, we have the chairman from the pension board, Rob Johnson, as well as the rest of the pension board. And we have David Green, who is from Dayhat Associates, that can answer more of the investment policy questions. And I believe what your question is, it goes straight to, to that. So if, if it's okay with you, like.
It's fine by me, I just need to know if this document was reviewed.
David Liam.
It has to be on the record, sir, you'd have to stand. Sir, you still have to be on the record, you have to come forward and state that. Yes, please.
David.
Your name.
Good evening, everyone. My name is David Lee from Dayhat Associates. To your question, I've never seen that document.
Okay. So we just spent, I guess, over an hour on trying to fix traffic. I certainly want to, I certainly want to make sure that the largest investment that we have is secured and our members never have to worry about when they retire that the money's not going to be there. I think at the appropriate time, it may be necessary to have this document reviewed by the, by the pension board, compare some notes and bring it back on September fourth. I'm totally fine with having that discussion, but to have it without giving the board an opportunity to review what the commission auditor provided would be unfair to my new colleagues, unfair to the board.
Point of, I, I, I'm gonna have to raise a point of clarification.
Sure, go ahead.
And, and, and I thank you for that indulgence. The, the commission order to report did not discuss the investment plan. The commission order to report was a listing essentially of, a comparative listing of how other communities, other community pension plans in the state were performing. It was sort of like a benchmark thing. What's before us today, and I think it is a document you should take a look at. And I know that it has been discussed many times because it's been brought to my attention by pension board members that they are aware that their level of earning is in that echelon of, 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 of what typically a police and pension fund of their magnitude generates. What's before us today is an investment fund question, a policy that frees their hand beyond such restrictions as sixty, only sixty percent of their, which is their current portfolio, sixty, they're sixty forty now, stocks to bonds. Everyone in the world is eighty twenty. If you're not eighty twenty in this market, you're not thinking clearly. Now, they also have, they, and, and that they should be able to invest in real estate opportunities that are worthwhile. And they should be able to invest in triple B bonds if, in triple, in triple B securities because they pay so much better than triple A and have the same default rate. So there really isn't a risk. And on top of that, they are also governed by state statute, as I understand. What are the state statutes? What do they do in terms of helping you to keep the fund secure?
Well, the state statute gives you the parameters, but it's the plan ordinance that gives the ceiling, if you will, for the plan to operate. What you have before you is, is legislation that frees them up to invest in greater opportunities, therefore returning more money. There's no cost to the city and the ordinance that you have before you. So we urge that you pass it today at first reading so that the bleeding can stop, for lack of a better word, as soon as possible.
Having said that.
Mayor, I like to reclaim my, I like to reclaim my time. I think we're off, we're off point.
But what, what I was gonna tell you was certainly between first and second reading, they would have the opportunity to read that document. You can have your time.
Thank you. In the backup, there's no sixty forty, there's no eighty twenty, there's nothing in the back.
No.
There's no, there's no, there's no, there's, there's no policy. There's no policy in front of this commission or in front of the public on first reading.
Yes, there is.
Show me in the backup.
Okay. Uh, city attorney, can you walk the commissioner through the items so that he understands the?
If, if, if I, if I may, to the, to the city clerk, there are only two items as far as attachments in the backup that's available to the public. I do not have phone books of paper. I've been paperless for over ten years, it's very efficient, it works for me. So there's only two links in the backup.
Can I see, can I, can you bring the links up, please?
One is the ordinance, which has no mention to what the current breakout of sixty forty. It speaks to the eighty percent. And the second is the business impact estimate, which is required by law, and that also doesn't have it.
Mr. City Attorney, can you, can you go through your ordinance, please, so that we can, we can be clear about what it is?
Mayor, if you will.
This is the request that came from the pension board.
If you will, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, on the line is Deputy City Attorney Julie Clark, who worked directly on the ordinance along with the pension board folks. Julie, was your permission, there she'd like to respond in the context of this particular draft. Are you available, Julie?
I am, can you hear me?
Very well, thank you.
Thank you. The only thing in the ordinance, as Commissioner Scheckter had indicated, there is a provision in it that specifically refers to the eighty percent, which is what the pension board of trustees has requested, the upper parameter to be. There is also in that ordinance, if you scroll to page three, that's been stricken through, which, which is what's currently in your code of ordinances, that limits that to sixty percent. There is no investment policy currently in the backup. This would give them the parameter to allow them to go up to eighty percent in an investment policy to identify the investment mix. What you have in your. I'm sorry.
It's not.
And the language is acceptable to the board?
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, Julie, if you will, Mr. Mayor, I can see where there's some limited confusion. The, the document in the green book is not the strike-through version, it's, it's a clean version. Julie, can, I'm not, I'm not sure you can see it on your computer.
Page three or in the, in the, in the online, there was no strike through at all.
Right. There's no, it's a clean version and it shows the eighty percent, but not the strike through so that someone might suggest not being able to know what was being stricken versus what's being added.
Well, that's sloppy, let's unslop it. Let's, let's take a look, walk us through, and let's be clear about what we're phoning on.
Julie, please continue with the mayor's question.
The, the language that you have in your backup, I'm looking at that right now, is the rewritten version of what N would look like. What was previously provided was a redlined version with the current version of what N contained. And there's one paragraph that comes out. And if you look in the version that you have, where you see the eighty percent, for all intents and purposes, it's the same, it's the same or similar language, but it provides a limit of sixty percent. And there are provisions from paragraph six through thirteen that are the same as what's already in your code. And paragraph fourteen is a new provision, and really it just moves from paragraph O up to paragraph N. It's already in your code. So the, really, the only change that's being made here is the paragraph that deals with the eighty percent and changing the parameters to input language pertaining to chapters one twelve, one seventy-five, one eighty-five, two fifteen, and two five eighteen. But the major change there is that it is changing the cap of what equities could be invested in from sixty percent to eighty percent. That board would then have to come up with a revised investment policy.
Okay, so Mayor, and thank you, thank you, Ms. Clark. So thirty-four fifty-six N one in the, on the online has eighty percent. But the statement was the sixty forty split and how it's broken out, that's what, that's what the ordinance used to say. But, but what I'm saying is, is that the actual policy of the pension board, unlike what we discussed, how many years ago was it, that was in front of us, is not in the backup at all. There is, there was no breakout as far as industry that could be, that could be invested in. There's no guidance of what can and cannot be traded in. It's not a part of the public record. And that's, and that's where I'm having some difficulty, and I'm asking for that to be included so we can take care of it on first reading September fourth, and then the second meeting in September, which would be the, which would be the second version, so we can complete this by October first.
You know, I have to, I have to tell you, Commissioner, you're right. You're right, this is sloppy, and I'm very sorry to make you all sit there. I, I feel badly about it. Does anyone want to make a motion to defer this till the next meeting so that we can get it right?
Move the defer till September.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Mayor.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, if you will.
Yes.
So the answer is that the motion this evening defers to the September fourth meeting on the premise that it'll be a second first reading.
That's correct.
And the backup will include the strike through and the red line, which is not there now.
Cost us too much money, because they were raring to go. So let's go. That, thank you, thank you, I'm sorry. We'll see you at the next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, let's go back to the beginning of the book and we can pick up the, the items that the requests of the public have been done. Commission order to report?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. Appeals to board adjustment decisions?
No, Mayor.
Announcement of board and committee appointments?
No, Mayor.
Okay, consent agenda consists of items one through seventeen. What is your pleasure?
Five and seventeen, please.
Who's asking?
Schwartz, five and seventeen.
Schwartz, five. And Schwartz seventeen. Okay, anyone else? I'll take a motion on the bounce. Motion made by the Vice Mayor, second by Commissioner Rodriguez. Anybody from the public want to speak on those items? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Passed unanimously, Commissioner Schwartz, item five.
Motion to approve the facility use agreement with the Boys and Girls Club of Broward County for the use of Pines Recreation Community Center for the development and implementation of a comprehensive youth and teen program.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by?
Second.
Second by the Vice Mayor. Commissioner Schwartz.
If I can have Assistant City Manager Christine Sorensen come on down?
Good evening, Christina Sorensen, Assistant City Manager.
Good evening, I'll be quick. The Boys and Girls Club reached out to your, the staff. In the backup, it says in January of two thousand twenty-three.
Okay, sounds about right, it's been a while I've been working on this.
Has the commission ever, from a policy standpoint, given staff direction to work with the Boys and Girls Club for potential programming?
Mr. Mayor, if I may address those questions rather than Christine.
Sure.
Okay. First of all, it wasn't the Boys and Girls Club that reached out to us, I reached out to the Boys and Girls Club. I had originally reached out to the YMCA a number of years ago, they did not express an interest. We have a concern, and we've tried for many years to develop youth programs at the Pines Rec Center. We have never been successful in doing this, and I was aware of the Boys and Girls Club's success in other areas of the county in providing services for young people, which isn't just sports-related, but very much in providing other services for young people. I sat and I met with them on many occasions to develop a program. At that time, I did not ask the commission for that because as the city administrator, I have many times developed programs and I've brought back to the commission for your consideration, and that's what you have here this evening. And that's how it developed. Christina became involved in it at my request in working with the Boys and Girls Club because, as you know, that facility had been closed for many years due to the fact that we were not successful in negotiating a contract with the county for that facility that we've had for many years. And because of that, we developed this program. Number one, that provides the services. It does, in fact, save the city significant dollars in the operation of that center because the Boys and Girls Club have taken on that responsibility to pay for many of those things as well as provide valuable services to the youth in our community. We did have an opportunity to meet with the district commu, Commissioner from that area. The Vice Mayor had some concerns, we addressed those, and we incorporated them in that contract. So that's what you have before you this evening.
Thank you, City Manager Dodge and, and Ms. Sorensen, I'll, I'll direct, my question's now to City Manager. City Manager, the engagement with, with an architectural firm. Who's doing the actual bidding? Is it the organization voluntarily working with that organization? Or are we directing the organization to work with that firm?
No, we, this, this is our proposal, this is our bid, and we've asked them to submit two different proposals. One, as if it was just the city, and one with the request that Boys and Girls Club had for design. They've also agreed that whatever those costs are that are in excess of what we would do, they would contribute those funds.
From a procurement standpoint, and I'll wait for the city attorney. From a procurement standpoint, is there a reason why we didn't RLI the architectural build-out portion?
Well, go ahead, Christina, she can address that portion of it, and the answers to that.
Structurally, structurally is, is where I'm, I'm trying to.
That's what we're talking about, we'll respond to that.
Christina Sorensen, so we're utilizing Manny Sanalovsky's, our continuing services agreement for park architectural services that we have that's approved, it's a three-year agreement that has a not-to-exceed value, and this project falls within that value.
Okay, may I address Ms. Sorensen? Okay. At what point, Ms. Sorensen, was the budget for the firm? This is where, this is where I'm having the issue with the, with the structure of how this is. We have someone on, we have a firm on retainer to perform work for us. Yes?
Yes.
We have Spring Valley Park, was that a part of the?
Same firm, same contract.
Okay, same contract. So what other projects prior to this, this evening, was the firm working on that we fell within budget?
So when we procured that contract, it was for, at the time, I, I knew some things that were going to be coming up. One of them was the Spring Valley project. Others, because it was a three-year agreement, were things that come up that maybe I don't know that's going to be in three years. So they have that value there for those types of projects. Things that are, they're currently working on right now are, we're doing an assessment of all the structural integrity of our pavilions and parks. They're working on the Spring Valley project, they're working on developing a standards for restrooms for all of our parks for renovation. They did the design for the shade structures that went out to bid for Maxwell and Josiah. And I'm forgetting one, I'd have to refer to my.
When did, when did this commission approve the contract? When did the three years start?
Right, I believe it was twenty twenty, June of two thousand twenty-three, because it expires in two thousand twenty-six.
Okay, just give me a second, I'm, I'm just about, wrap this up here. Okay, so. Just bear with me, Mayor, I'm just looking at. So we have, Mr. Dodge, when, when did we start engaging the conversation with the Boys and Girls Club?
I'm estimating maybe a year and a half ago.
Okay. Ms. Sorensen, a year and a half ago with the Boys and Girls Club, but you had identified the Sanalovsky firm to redo the rec center prior to that?
No. So thinking back, and I, and I thought I put it in the agenda, but this building has been complicated.
Oh, I know, it's a mess.
And, and in part of it has to do with the lease with the airport. So prior to the lease, prior to the lease even expiring back in two thousand eighteen, we had a, a smaller firm do the design documents for us. And they were, they were minded, they were just to redo the roof and to. And they were, they were minded. They were just to redo the roof and to redo the, the, the fascia and the soffit and the doors and windows. Um, at the time, that project way back in twenty eighteen fell below the threshold of CCNA, which requires you to go through a certain procurement process. So fast forward now, we have the lease agreements in place and we are ready to, uh, do the renovation. And we now have to hire a different firm because of CCNA requirements require you to go through that process. Because when we hired, when we engaged Manny as our continuing services agreement, that all of the language in there included these types of projects. So we followed CCNA, therefore I was able to engage Manny at the time to do the project.
Okay. So colleagues, that, that's where I have structurally how it i- is. There were some questions I had. I reached out to the city manager earlier. I reached out to the attorney. Um, it's the first time I'm speaking with Sorensen about it. But I did have a conversation, uh, with an executives of the Boys and Girls Club back in December of last year. Um, I was a part of a, um, a public forum and, um, it was at that forum I was told, uh, that the, uh, that the Boys and Girls Club was working with the city administration. So I've been waiting for this to come. Um, and certainly, um, Vice Mayor Good, it's your district and I'm glad you dove in and, and make it happen. Cause I want, I want this for you. I want this for our residents. It was just the structure of the, um, of the build out that just didn't, um, um, feel like it was following the normal course of our, of our, um, the way that we do business. So I reached out to the city attorney and, and please, Mr. Goran, correct me if I'm wrong. It was clear that this is a facility use agreement. Period.
It is not a lease. It is a facilities use agreement that has, has a different legal texture to it for some very important reasons.
Exactly. So I, I, I wanted to let you know, I, I did my due diligence to make sure that there wasn't a procurement foul. Cause I would, I would certainly not want to put us in a position where we're moving forward and we get some kind of a, of an issue with maybe another organization who would want to jump on the same opportunity. So, um, I just want to get it out all on the record as far as the processes and the things. I'm happy to support the item tonight. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted, if I could, just very quickly and then Vice Mayor, it's your district. When this first came up, I asked them why, why wasn't it RFP'd? And he gave me an answer. I knew the, uh, he gave me an answer. And the answer was, uh, there's really only two groups in, in Broward capable of doing this. Boys and Girls Clubs and YMCA. And YMCA said no. And he's right. There are only two. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, uh, thank you, Commissioner Schwartz, for, you know, sharing your review of this as well. So, um, yeah, I didn't have the luxury of having a, a, a long time awareness of this project and, um, certainly when it, when it landed on, on my eyes, I was, uh, very, um, uh, concerned about the fact that, uh, this facility, uh, is a, um, a very important facility for District One and District Two because it's right across the street actually from District Two. And it served a lot, a lot of youth and it served a lot, a lot of elders and it served a lot, a lot of everything in between. And this building is very, very old and, and I'm going to bring some context here because I think it's important for my colleagues to understand, uh, some of the con, somebody, some of this, this particular issue about recreation for within my district in particular, and I'm certain Commissioner Schwartz could probably speak to it as well, and I'll let him speak to it as he does. Is, is very, uh, i- i- it's, it's absent with the exception of sports, right? So if you want to play football or soccer, you have the availability to do that. It's a great program. Cannot, cannot deny the fact they got great programming there. But when it comes to everything else, there is very little recreating. And, uh, that building is exceptionally old, even before it closed. I mean, I could still see essentially like yellow stains in there. I mean, all, I mean, you just walk in, it's like all yellow looking, you know? As hard as it was tried to keep it looking fresh, it's just a very old building. So what happens is, uh, we get this, uh, issue with the roof. And it causes the facility to close. And this is even before COVID. Next thing you know, there's a big fence that goes around the recreate buildings. And people, like I say, a lot of people were using that facility for one reason or another. Um, so when that building had an issue with the roof, we, as you heard, Ms. Sorensen speak, we had an issue with the lease agreement. Y'all don't know that Pines Rec Center area, those fields do not belong to the city of Pembroke Pines. They are actually leased from Ba- Broward County because it's part of the airport property. And because of that, uh, issue with the lease, you know, of course, the city manager says, why am I gonna put money into a building that I don't know is going to be, we're going to be able to use it tomorrow? And he's right. I can't deny that. And so that lease took nearly two years to get resolved. But what happened? Now by then it's COVID. So nobody wants to put people together. That building has been closed since what, two thousand nineteen? We're in two thousand twenty-four. District One, District Two has been deprived for, for a long time. So when I heard this opportunity, I was like, wow, great. I know the Boys and Girls Club. It does serve a specific youth group, which really is, uh, a very, very, a big need for us. But there is still, there are other things that are associated with this. Because again, remember it's, it's a recreate facility for other things. So there were two issues that I did have meetings with, um, Ms. Sorensen and, and, uh, the president or the JVO of, of the, uh, of the Boys and Girls Club. You know, they expressed to me, you know, the programming. I said, great, great. I said, but, uh, but this is sort of a little bit more regionalized. Meaning, you know, it's not just Pembroke Pines, you know? So what happens if a Pembroke Pine youth wants to use that program? I'm concerned about that. So we're, you know, they should have first right, in my mind, to be able to participate. So that language has actually been included in the, in, in, in the agreement where basically no Pembroke Pines child will be left behind. So that's actually in the agreement. So it was very, very good to see that. Uh, the other, uh, the other issue was, well, what happens to the facility when, uh, Boys and Girl Club are not operating it? Can we still use it for other programming? And so that too is now also in the, uh, agreement where we have the ability, when the Boys and Girls Club is not utilized in the facility, that there is an ability to have other programming there that, you know, addresses other, um, other types of, uh, recreation. So thankful for this. I'm thankful that we were able to work through some of these very important concerns. Thankful that we're at least going to be able to get a, a little bit of a modern, uh, or a, 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 an upgrade, an uplift facility and create programming again, create energy. But one of the most important things that I want my colleagues, why is this? Why am I going through all this, right? I could just say, hey, there's a great program, walk away. Don't, don't say nothing. I have for, uh, a little bit of time been doing a, a research and trying to figure out how is it? How can the city be deeded that property? Because we've been using that property since the very beginning of time when that airport was installed for recreation. And through the federal registrar, not even state statutes, the federal registrar, it gives certain preferences for, for these type of recreation facilities. And so the question is, is how can we get that land deeded to the city? So then the city manager will not push me away when I say, well, can we build a facility like the YMCA? And let that kind of programming occur, you know, uh, within the, you know, within, you know, this area would better, it would be better served. Um, you know, so the, the, the ask that I'm going to have you all, which I'm going to come back with, is, is that maybe we push a resolution in order to ask for that property be deeded to, uh, the city of Pembroke Pines because we've had it for so long. We continue to use it for, uh, all of our programming, our sport programming and our recreating programming. And I think it's very, very important, um, that we do this in unison and see what happens from there.
Vice Mayor, I, my understanding is that, my understanding always was, Mr. Dodge, tell me if I'm wrong, that they lease it to us for free and, and we, uh, provide fire rescue to their, uh, airport for free. Is that it?
Mayor, it used to be that way. We do get this facility at no charge, but the fire services we provide to the airport, uh, we're paying the, the county.
We pay the county to?
Yeah, there, there's a charge back, uh, to the county. I believe it was at like ninety thousand a year.
We, we, we pay them to provide fire.
Because they did, they did an analysis as to the appraised value of the property, what it's worth. And I believe there was some.
Oh, oh, okay. So this is like a, this is like a, uh, uh, but it balances.
Balances, yeah.
So, so so the, the nature of the arrangement is a swap of, 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 uh, of value. So we provide.
One for the fire station and this one.
We provide a fire station, uh, full of heroes and ninety thousand dollars and they give us the park. Is that it?
If, I guess you could simplify it.
Well, that's the, that's the transaction.
If, Mr. Mayor, if I may though, and, and I, I won't, I don't want to deviate too far away, but it's just, it, the, the lease that we actually have for the park, I think, was, was a ten-year lease, if I'm not mistaken. And the lease that we have for the fire station is a five-year lease. And we're at risk at any time that those leases expire to lose the right to access it. And that's the issue is, is the fact that we're going lease to lease. And when I asked the city manager, can we do something more? I mean, because we don't own the underground, the, the land, he will not support a project that will cost potentially millions of dollars on land that we don't own.
I, I have to, I have to tell you that, that, that the prospect of that is relatively manageable in that the county would have no fire service at their airport. It would have to close.
Oh, they don't care?
No, hold on.
Well, I, I shouldn't say they don't care.
Let me, let me, let me, point of clarification. Let me, let me get, let me get the.
I'll let you go.
Okay, so. This is a federal, it's an FAA thing. This is not Broward County North Valley Airport thing. This is FAA. As a matter of fact, this is Trump administration that made, wanted to make money on airports that jammed us, uh, with the fire agreement where, where Mayor Ordis had to reach out to, um, US senators to try to fix, you remember that? Where we could not get an agreement. We were, it, it used to be a, a one dollar swap forever. And then once the Trump administration came aboard, they went ahead and said they want market rate for everything. So the, the, there are, there are federal grant assurances on that property. And the only way that the city could acquire that, Vice Mayor Good, is if we were to pay off that. It would be, um, astronomical for us to do that. The, the fact that we have a five-year or ten-year agreement. I have a bigger issue with Broward College jamming us with what they're doing.
This is, this is.
Right?
This has gone too far afield.
But we've lost fields because of, of, of their situation. And right now, the, um, Pines Rec needs an absolute overhaul. And I am, I'm grateful for the opportunity that we do have. Now with respect to what would happen to the fire service, let me be clear on that.
I'm sorry, sir. I, I, I know you want to talk about it. It's just too far afield from the item in front of us. Vice Mayor, if you want to bring an item, please meet with the city manager, bring an item. That's a very different item than, than what's in front of us right now. All that's in front of, in front of us right now is Boys and Girls Club. That's it. That's the only thing that's in front of us.
So, ma- ma- Mayor.
Really have to stick to the point? We have a long agenda.
I, I do. And, and I, and I, and I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to upset you in any way.
Go ahead.
The, the option, the fire station would stay. They would just put BSO there. And then we would have to find another place at the Howard Foreman Center for fire services. We've avoided all that and we've come to that conclusion and I'm thankful that we've been able to resolve that issue. I believe that having the Boys and Girls Club in that facility only emboldened our position.
I agree.
To allow us to actually have a longer term. That's all I'm saying.
Okay, enough said. Anything else on this item? Anything from the public? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Carries unanimously. Congratulations. Thank you very much. Mr. City Attorney, first.
Seventeen, Mayor, seventeen.
Oh, I'm sorry, seventeen.
Uh, mo- motion to approve the minutes, uh, Wednesday, May fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, regular commission meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by the Vice Mayor, Commissioner Schwartz.
Um, I, I'm not, I'm not sure, um, staff, um, how they saw it, but the, um, uh, I, I believe we passed, uh, the minutes except for the portion that I was looking for a, uh, transcribed. So we bifurcated, uh, the, uh, May first and fifteenth, approved the May fif- the, the May fifteenth minutes with the exception of the board appointment section. And in the direction that you gave me, Mayor, was to bring back that portion. So I, I don't know if, if, if this, uh, is even necessary.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Um, we listened to the tape and I had said on the record, I believe the request was they wanted to, uh, the commissioner wanted a verbatim transcript. And I had indicated, and the city attorney indicated that in order to get a verbatim transcript, you needed to request it at the time of the meeting. Uh, it wasn't even requested the second time when it was brought up when, uh, Commissioner Schwartz asked for it to be bifurcated. So we're just putting the minutes before you because it's that section of the minutes that has not been approved.
So if the manager needs, um, and, and I know that Vice Mayor Good has asked for transcriptions before and it's never had to go through a vote, but if that's what the manager wants, then I'll make a motion.
It's, it's not what I want. It's what is the process and that's what was referred to.
Sorry, I've been here for twelve years. I know what the process is. And usually when a commissioner asks for a transcript, we get the transcript. But if you want me to make the motion, I'll make the motion. Okay, I'll make the motion to transcribe the portion of the meeting in which we were discussing board appointments. Because I couldn't make the motion at the meeting because I was no longer in it. So I'd like to have a second so we can move on.
Is there a second to the motion? Okay.
Uh, just up, up and down vote? Call the question.
Call roll call, roll call, please.
And that's, Mr. Mayor, the motion as, as proposed is to in fact provide a, a verbatim transcript of that portion of the meeting described by Commissioner.
What will that cost?
Can I, I, I'm just going to say something.
It doesn't really, it doesn't really.
It's on video.
Okay, if you want, if you would like a transcript, I'm willing to vote for a transcript. However, on the caveat that we are professional about this, just move the page forward. This, for lack of better terms, like this discussion just keeps on coming up. And I think we all kind of not the greatest day in Pembroke Pines history. Let's just move forward. You want the transcript? You'll have my vote through the transcript, but if it keeps on coming up, it's just, at this point annoying.
Thank you. Anything else? Call and roll, please.
Mayor, on the request for transcript?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Castillo?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
To, uh, first reading ordinances, City Attorney, can you read, please?
With your permission, Mayor, I'd be happy to. Number eighteen, excuse me. Eighteen is a motion to pass proposed ordinance number twenty-two, twenty-four, ten on first reading. It is an ordinance of the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, amending chapter thirty-two of the city's code of ordinances entitled Departments, Boards, and Commissions, and specifically creating section thirty-two dash one forty-six entitled Citizen Budget Advisory Board, providing for composition, providing for objectives, providing for competence, providing for separability, and finally providing for effective date, item maintained on the floor for consideration, Mayor, Commission eighteen.
Is there a motion? Move. Commissioner Schwartz is moving it. You, uh, you want a second, uh, Vice Mayor? Any discussion?
Yeah, quickly, Mayor.
Yes.
Um, I, I, I love the item. Yeah, eleven years ago, um, it was brought up. I supported it. And I would like to make, uh, uh, a suggestion. I'd like to have.
I'd like to have, uh, the inclusion of two additional members to the board, non-voting members, one active police officer, one active firefighter. For the City Pembroke Pines.
Is there a second?
Can we get it to the next place?
Yes.
Just, just because this is a citizenry and now we're involving staff?
No, we're not involving staff, we're involving employees, which we have our, our finance director. So be non-voting, right? So there's going to, it's an opportunity, okay, for, um, laborers to get a little bit more educated and, and a formal process. And I think it's, I think it's a great opportunity, uh, to be able to share information, so that that information going forward is just, um, it's just available to all. I, I think it's a great opportunity for us, um, allow our citizens to be the voting members. Um, I think the city attorney called the ex-officiato or something like that.
Ex-officio.
Ex-officio, ex-officio, which will be non-voting, because that would certainly cause a conflict, non-voting, but I want them to have a seat at the table to discuss things.
And who, and who would choose?
Uh, I would, I would, um, uh, if, if it's appropriate, uh, to have, uh, both, uh, the IFF and FOP to designate, uh, just like the Chamber of Commerce designates therefore.
And it would, so these would be labor representatives?
Labor representatives, one from fire, one from PD, non-voting members on the board, and the rest of the composition on fire.
I certainly have no objection. Do they want to have an objection to that?
I guess my thought would be, would, or so you're bringing them so that they can give perspective as to questions on the budget?
Right, to be able to, be able to have that interaction at the table versus attending the meetings and, and having, you know, the public can participate in these meetings, right? By having a seat at the table, I think is, is vitally important.
My, I guess my thought is, is it having them at the table, does it impede any resident to kind of bring questions about that particular budget part that just takes up a large chunk of our budget?
We, very, very rarely the, 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 uh, public shows up to these things, very rarely. And very rarely they, they don't really take testimony. This is an advisory board.
No, I'm, like, for the people on the advisory board.
Yeah, no.
Another question?
Yeah.
So, because this is not staff, and we're appointing union representation, essentially, do we, do we need, uh, their okay, that they want to do it?
They don't have to do it. It's just an ex officio, it's, it's simply an ex officio.
For, for the record, I'm not blind. I, I'm, I spoke to both, uh, fire and PD, uh, prior to tonight.
It's, it's both fire and PD. If they want to appoint somebody, they can. If they don't want, they don't vote, so it's just somebody else, uh, invited to, uh, to be in the room. And, uh, I'm happy to see them there. Any, anybody else? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. When will this come back for the second?
Mr. Mayor, the answer is it'll come back as amended. I assume the motion, uh, which includes our first reading, included the, uh, the two modifications.
It certainly did, yeah.
Uh, we come back on September the fourth.
Wonderful. Next item.
Next up is not number nineteen, because you've already gone through number nineteen.
Yep.
Uh, next up is number twenty, if I may, may read, Mr. Mayor.
Go right ahead.
This is motion to adopt proposed resolution number twenty-two-four R twenty-six, which is a resolution directing the city administration to install a plaque at Pembroke Pines Charter High School, dedicating a classroom M one zero one at Pembroke Pines Charter High School in remembrance of Lorraine Vasquez, in accordance with section one zero zero point zero two of the city's Pembroke Pines Code of Ordinances, directing the appropriate city officials to take any and all act necessary to effectuate the intent of the resolution, providing for conflicts, separability, and providing for an effective date.
Is there a motion? Moved by, uh, Commissioner Schwartz, seconded by the Vice Mayor. Uh, Mr. Dodge, if we could have Mr. Bayer come forward? Is his family here? Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Peter Bear, Principal Pembroke Pines Charter High School.
Tell us a little bit about this.
So, Lorraine Vasquez was an art teacher. She opened our school as the original art teacher in two thousand. Um, she was fresh out of college at that time. She worked half her life, uh, in that classroom. And she died, unfortunately, this past year at the end of the school year, uh, tragically, of a brain aneurysm. Um, her kids, you know, she got married while she was at our school. She had kids, they grew up, they attend our school, they're here tonight, but it got kind of past her bedtime. Uh, so they know a lot about overpasses now, and they'll do a project on it probably.
Very sorry.
Um, but, but.
Stick over that.
They're, 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 they're a fantastic family, uh, their charter through and through, and, and, uh, and Lorraine was loved by all of us, uh, at the school. So it would mean a lot.
Uh, Peter and I had the, had, had this conversation, uh, when, when he issued the email, uh, about this, and, uh, I'm so very thankful to you for, uh, for coming up with the suggestion, and, uh, I wanted to see it on the agenda. I mean, I think that this is exactly who we are. We remember the people that matter. When they're no longer with us, we do the right thing. And she will be remembered and had an impact on thousands of children in Pembroke Pines. And I can't think of anything more fitting or appropriate. I just want to thank you and everyone at your school for, uh, for all that you do.
I'm truly, truly appreciated by the family, and, and everybody at the school will appreciate it. And we'll do what we've been cutting, uh, when it, when it's, when it's ready, and everybody's invited.
There's no such thing as a successful person in life that didn't have a special teacher that they can point to and say they made a difference in my life. And that's what makes education so amazing. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
The record, the number, the permanent number is number thirty-eight seventy-four, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Bayer, please invite us to when, uh, that will be, uh, unveiled. Thank you. Next item.
Number twenty-one, Mr. Mayor, is a motion to adopt proposed resolution number twenty-two-four R twenty-seven, to resolution of the city commission of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, approving and adopting the tri-party agreement among Broward Metropolitan Planning Organization, the NPO, and the City Pembroke Pines, and the Metropolitan Transportation Engineering and Construction Cooperative, the CMTEC, for Pembroke Pines Mobility Hub Capital Project, and providing for an effective date.
Is there, is there a motion? Motion by the Vice Mayor is there a second? Second by Commissioner Rodriguez. Is there, are there any overpasses involved in this?
Not to my knowledge, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Everything's on ground level?
So far.
We're a very grounded city, you know. No pun intended. Seeing no further discussion, any from the public, seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously, item twenty-two.
Permanent number thirty-eight seventy-five, Mayor, for the record.
Wonderful.
Thank you. Number twenty-two.
Waiting, sir.
Twenty-two. Proposed resolution number twenty-two-four R twenty-eight is a resolution of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, amending the budget for the City Pembroke Pines, Florida State University Charter Elementary School for the Charter School Fiscal Year beginning on July one, twenty twenty-three, providing for conflicts, separability, and providing for effective date. Twenty-two on the floor for consideration, twenty-two.
Motion made by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Hernandez. Any further discussion? Seeing none, any from the public? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
Permanent number thirty-eight seventy-six, three eight seven six, Madam Clerk. Next up is number twenty-three, if I may read, Mayor. This is the motion to adopt proposed resolution number twenty-two-four R twenty-nine, which is a resolution of the City Pembroke Pines, Florida, amending the budget for the City Pembroke Pines Charter Schools for the Charter School Fiscal Year be, beginning on July one, twenty twenty-three, providing for conflicts, separability, and providing for an effective date. Twenty-three on the floor, Mayor, twenty-three.
Motion by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Rodriguez. Any discussion? Hearing none. Any from the public? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, item twenty-four.
Thirty-eight seventy-seven, and is the permanent number. Number twenty-four, for the record, Mayor and Commission, is a motion to approve modifications to the Fire Prevention Fee Schedule for annual fire inspections and the inspection and testing of fire safety and fire extinguishing apparatus on the floor for consideration, number twenty-four, twenty-four.
What's your pleasure? Moved by the Vice Mayor. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Rodriguez. Any discussion? Seeing none, any from the public? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Reports to the league representatives.
Florida League, first.
A couple of us were at the Florida League, um, conference that happened this past weekend. Um, I will be bringing a couple more, I guess, formal, um, summary of what I gathered, but one of the things that I did want to point out, there was a part of, um, the workshops that included how to communicate your budget to our community, and I thought that was super interesting, one of the,
Really?
The caveat, one of the examples that they gave is, um, similar to how we do our budget in brief, they include it in their, um, monthly newsletter that I know we have digitally, but they make it themed. So, for example, to explain to somebody else our, our giant budget, um, they kind of come up with themes. One of them, just to put the example out there, was movie theater. So every new capital project is a new premiere, and they kind of like make it make sense for people.
I love that kind of.
The, the kind of stuff like how much your convenience is, like, uh, that they make up the convenience stand at, like, how much popcorn you sell is how much tax, you know, you're making, or whatever it may be. Um, I don't remember the specifics, but, um, and I had talked to our finance department about this at the beginning. The budget is such a crucial part of what we do, and I think it's real important for us to communicate that to, um, our residents and to ourselves sometimes. It's a really overwhelming document. So that was something that I kind of took away. That was the kind of highlight, as, um, as well as just connecting with other local leaders.
You know, I'm so glad you brought that up. I know Commissioner, uh, Hernandez, uh, he's the, he's agrees to do a, a white paper on communications, but this whole thing of video presentations of, uh, communicating with people using graphics about the things that Pembroke Pines does, it's just so neat. And, and, gosh, I wish we could find a way to get there. Uh, I, I just think that's a great idea. I want to thank you for that. Uh, I hope you bring your item back. Uh, I'm all on board with it. I think that it's, it's a, it's simply a great way to communicate, and so I'm looking forward to that. Anything else on, uh, from the league? Commissioner Schwartz?
Uh, the, our Broward League, uh, they resume festivities next month. Uh, we will be hosting, uh, the meeting in December. So mark your calendars and where you're standing at. Yep.
I was, I was going to ask a question. So, uh, we made a decision on the SRO issue, and I think that's great. But this whole business of, of, uh, of groups, uh, just jumping in to do negotiations on behalf of cities without our approval? I'm not good with that.
Uh, if, if I may, um, so, our former director, uh, Vice Mayor Seifel, um, has no retribution of general business. It appears to have been done at a, um, an executive level of sorts. Um, I still haven't dialed into where and who, I believe it may have been, uh, Meyerson, uh, included in that conversation, but um, certainly, um, I think we're all in agreement that, uh, the best people who represent Pines.
You're blessed.
Right, so.
Do, do you mind communicating to the, as our representatives to the league that they have no license or any invitation to negotiate?
I, I will, I, you know, I have a certain way of communicating.
Well, that's all I can tell. And, and, and if, and if the Chiefs Association could know that as well, we expect, we expect to be negotiated with directly.
Yeah.
Uh, not through some unauthorized third party. And I say this with great respect, they had no license or any invitation to negotiate on the part of this city, or any cities, as far as I know. So, I just wanted to mention that. Okay, your item twenty-six, Commissioner Schwartz.
Okay, so that we don't have to.
Oh, I'm sorry. Were there reports of the, of the city manager?
No, Mayor.
Mr. City Attorney, did you have a, uh, an item to report?
Just one item, uh, Mayor.
Go right ahead.
Just give me a minute. This past week, we published a memorandum to you, uh, regarding a statute six twenty-four, forty-six, twenty-two, regarding the local government self-insurance funds. And we've been researching this question. The mayor directed us to take a look at it. Administration looked at it, Mr. Rothstein looked at it. We were trying to find a way to provide you with some guidance and some direction regarding the insurance issues and crises in the state. In reading the statute, there was an option, or there appeared to be some, some clarity in the language. If you've all seen the memo, we published it to you on the fifteenth of August, uh, that, that would potentially allow local governments to, in fact, provide for self-insurance to allow homeowners and condo owners to, essentially, through the assistance of a self-insurance pool, uh, to have local government provide insurance. And it seemed fairly directly in the statute. Uh, we did quite a bit of homework on the subject. Um, the statute was adopted in a special session of the legislature in two thousand and seven. We did some homework on that. We actually consulted with our, our lobbying folks in Tallahassee that do work with us at the Howard C Foreman Center, uh, one of whom is a lawyer, and she's with Smith, Bryan and Myers, and we actually went to the top of talking with the Department of the Office of Insurance Regulation, OIR, which is the, uh, R that controls how this thing works. Um, they were trying to be helpful, but not exceptionally. Um, you'll note in the memorandum, however, that we did some digger deeping, uh, dig, uh, we dug, we dug deeper is what the case may be. It, it turns out that, that Senator Geller, uh, was in the legislature in two thousand and seven. He was actually in the room when the bill was drafted. It was his bill, it was directed by the governor. And unfortunately, uh, the language which appeared to be potentially possible as a, as a place to hang your hat, which I know that the mayor and his commission would have supported, uh, and the administration certainly was looking into as an option, uh, is not a legal option. Because the, the statute just doesn't give the, um, the force of law that we had hoped he would be able to testify to, and unfortunately would not be. OIR was helpful, uh, the folks in Tallahassee. I, I don't want to say they were unhelpful, but they, they, uh, they were somewhat hesitant to, uh, to commit. There's only one other way to get them to commit, which is to file what's called a chapter one twenty proceeding, administrative proceeding to challenge it. It wasn't worth the time, effort, and the city's money, uh, because that's in the dollars and cents that would go nowhere in the context of issues. Because at some point in time, um, when you don't have a legislative history, which was missing, by the way, in this bill in Tallahassee, which is a key factor, um, somehow, somewhere, they would have found Senator Geller in, in his testimony, which he provided to us in writing, which I can share with you, it's public record. Uh, we put into the memo, and we thank him for his efforts. He actually, not, not only did he understand the bill, he helped to write it, in fact, was the, uh, uh, the author. Uh, regrettably, this is not a legal option. We've done as best as we could trying to open up doors. I know these were things discussed by the commission early on back in the spring. Um, the memo reflects on, uh, realities to the fact that we simply are unable to get from here to there legally under the statute that was promoted.
Yeah, so nobody had heard of this statute. I certainly hadn't heard of it. And, uh, Pembroke Pines resident Brandon Carrero called me, and he said, "Take a look at this. I stumbled on it at work." And the second I looked at it, I read it, it said, "Two or more governmental leg, uh, entities can form an organization that can ensure any property which either or both of them have an interest in." And I said, "Well, Sam, we have an interest in all the properties in Pembroke Pines because we are the taxing authority." And he said, "That's a pretty strong argument." Now, before we thought that I wanted to start an insurance company, it really wasn't, it was, it was more along the lines of, there might have been a niche for us. A, assuming the, the statutory authority was there, we might have been able to bring in an actuarial firm who we would have had to pay, to define what that niche might have been. What might the niche have been? Well, if you're in a condo unit, you have to pay for the first hundred thousand dollars in the market, and we'll cover the next fifty. And that might have reduced their total payment. Or we might have been able to only do it in condos, but not single-family homes. Or we might have been able to chop this part of it out and not the other part of it out. It was never my expectation that we could ever get our hands around the reserves that would be necessary in order to do anything more than that. But even if, even if our effort could help them a little bit, I thought if, if the authority was there, maybe we could get, you know, come together to at least study it a little bit. And that's not possible because the statute doesn't allow it. But it allows Pembroke Pines to say something that no other city can say. We went even to that length to help them with their issue. So if anyone says City Pembroke Pines has done, uh, didn't lift a finger to help us with home insurance, you can tell them the story. We tried, and they said no. Commissioner Schwartz, you're, uh, you're recognized for item twenty-six.
Thank you, Mayor. Discussion and possible action to prepare a joint resolution with the Broward County School Board in support of state of Florida funding for school resource officers, SROs, for every school district in Florida, to direct the City of Pembroke Pines administration to work directly with Superintendent Dr. Hepburn and school board administration to craft a joint resolution with the intent to have the Broward delegation to file a twenty-two-four, twenty-five legislation on our behalf.
Go ahead.
That's it. I'm just looking for a motion and a second.
So, so, so look, I think this is, this is incredibly well-intended, particularly if we get paid at the end. However, it needs to come from the school board. And if the school board put together a, uh, a proposal of this kind and asked for our, for a resolution of support, that would be in order. But please understand that when we go to Tallahassee, there's only so much bandwidth that a city gets. there's only so much bandwidth that a city gets. Uh, we have asked for all kinds of, uh, appropriations, not many in any given year. And most recently, they have been vetoed. Uh, when you put issues like this in front of the legislature, uh, they tend to ignore them. So we have a new school board now. There's new energy there. If they were to put forward, um, a resolution for themselves or, or, or in combination with other school boards and ask for city su- support, especially if it helps to offset their cost with us, I can't imagine that we wouldn't get five very enthusiastic yeses. But it's
If I, if I may clarify that.
We can't, we can't create a, uh, a legislative item for another governmental.
Let, let me, let me be, let me be a little bit clearer then, okay? I'm not suggesting that the City Pembroke Pines is going to ask Eric's consultants to go run and build up the Tallahassee. That's not what this is.
Okay.
What this is, is our good faith effort, as the Vice Mayor was speaking to, about walking arm-in-arm with our government partner, the school board of Broward County, to let them know that we're not going to leave them hanging. We're not going to give them, uh, threats, and we're going to work with them to achieve the maximum available funding. Now, I will take a step further. I don't believe this is the Broward County issue. This is a state of Florida issue. I've been very clear. There's sixty-seven school boards that are in the same unfunded mandate position.
No, I, I don't, I don't, I don't know that that's true.
I don't, I don't believe that there is.
Why do you think that's true? Miami Dade, Miami Dade, Miami Dade has been providing, uh, security in all of their schools. They seem to have the funding. Um, Palm Beach County had provided security in all their schools. They seem to have the funding. What makes you think that Broward is so special?
Because it's the place that we live.
Now, that's, that's not an answer.
I will, I will, listen, uh, mayor, I, I would, I would say this. I've been in communication with the superintendent.
Okay.
Okay. I've provided him a draft of this language.
Right.
And I want to be able to, I want to be able to, to, I'll wait for Commissioner Hernandez.
Have them send it to the resolution.
I, I, I would, I would like for us, i- if, if, if we're not going to go first with, um, uh, uh, with, uh, with gargantuan steel structures, at least we can stand with the kids, right? Let's send a message that, let's, let's, let's send, let's send a message downtown.
Stand with the kids. Who stands more with the kids than we do?
Mayor, I'm just asking for us, if, if you want to vote no, vote no. I, I, I'm asking.
Why don't you, why don't you go and, and, and have them send us a request to support a request of theirs? This, this resolution asks to prepar- prepare a joint resolution with the Broward County School Board. I don't even know that they are interested in this.
That's why I have the city manager speaking directly with Dr. Hepburn. Do you know why?
The, Mr. Manager, did, did you speak to Dr. Hepburn about this?
It hasn't passed yet, mayor.
Did you speak to, is that the request?
Not, not on this. If I can finish my sentence, uh, look, the, the way that they're, they're structured at the Broward County School Board is no school board member can place an item on the agenda. Everything goes through the superintendent.
I don't know why.
Because that's the structure of their charter and, and the policy.
That's the first thing I changed.
So we would have to work.
That, we got six new school board members. That's crazy.
Mayor, do I have the floor? Okay. So my request is to ask our city manager to get with their administrator to have the conversation, and if they so choose to, to, to request that, I want to be the first one in line to support them.
Now, that's a different, that's a different thing.
That's what it says.
No, sir. What this says is prepare a joint resolution. It doesn't say direct the city attorney to, uh, uh, a city manager to speak to the superintendent. That's a, that's a horse of a different color.
I, I don't know. It's to, to direct the City Pembroke Pines administration to work directly with the superintendent.
To write a, a, no.
To craft it, to craft a joint resolution.
To prepare a joint resolution with the Broward County School Board.
Which would have to come back to us.
Okay. They, let them bring a, 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 a resolution, and we'll, 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 we'll support it. But it's, it's their issue. We cannot create a legislative item.
Are you, are you giving me authority?
Yeah.
Authority.
I can't give you any authority.
Well, no, you, you.
But if you want to ask the manager, that's in order. That's in order. But we can't, i- if you ask us to, to write a resolution for another governmental.
No, I'm not asking, I'm not asking.
You're asking me to find it out of order.
I'm not asking us to write the resolution.
Well, that's what this says. It says, prepare a joint resolution. We can't prepare a joint resolution with them. We can, we can, we can, we can support a resolution of theirs. But if you want, if you want to direct the city attorney, the city manager to talk to the superintendent about it, I think, I, I'm all for it. I have no objection to that. I'm just reacting to what you wrote.
Okay. So to make it in, 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 uh, city attorney, uh, in the spirit of, of, of the mayor's focus, uh, give me a substitute motion that we can pass this evening.
Mayor respond, mayor?
Yes.
Uh, given the language and the discussion on the day, it's, it would be essentially to, uh, a motion to direct the uh, city administration to work with the superintendent, Dr. Hepburn, um, to request, uh, that the school board of Broward County provide, um, a joint, strike that, to provide a resolution requesting coordination and cooperation with the City Pembroke Pines with the intent to file le- legislation with the Broward delegation in the upcoming session.
That would be my motion. Is there a second? Any further discussion?
Yeah, I, I'd just like to say one thing.
Go right ahead.
Because I, I, I'm in agreement. I think there's got to be, uh, a, a working together type of thing.
Mm-hmm.
But, um, if I can ask, I mean, because, you know, you're with the, with the Broward League, right? And maybe this is also something that you can actually get them to all agree on a resolution that all cities would pass simultaneously in order to drive this, you know? Because one resolution, one city versus thirty resolutions, thirty city, I think makes a bigger difference when you bring it to Tallahassee.
I, 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 man, man, uh, Vice Mayor, I, I agree with you, right? I think that, that we can certainly lead the discussion. Um, uh, the, um, the, if, if we can get this moved tonight, I can certainly, um, let the, uh, general membership know in September, the actions that we've taken to resolve an issue, right, that's impacting their cities as well.
Sounds good to me. Everybody agree?
Yep, I do.
Do you want to vote, or do you want to?
A vote, please.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed unanimously. Anything on, uh, new business or old business?
Commissioner?
Yes, go right ahead.
I just wanted to, we had an election yesterday, want to congratulate my very good friend Rebecca Thompson on her win for school board, as well as Mauro Bowman, um, for school board district one, if I'm not mistaken, so it's just the east, um, side of Pembroke Pines. So we do have two brand-new school board members that I think all of us very much look forward to working alongside, um, as well as just congratulate the reelection of all of, um, the people that got reelected into office. Um, and then on the newly elected, although we had tax collectors, so just want to congratulate Abby and Yali.
Abby here.
That's it.
Anything else? We'll adjourn. Thank you so much. Enjoy your weekend.
Thank you.